We ready? Okay, please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Madam Clerk, could I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Christine Adams-Zach.
Here.
Councilmember Linda Hammer.
She's a...
Absent.
Yeah, she's absent.
Councilmember Michael Jazinski.
Here.
Councilmember Gerald Kaminsky.
Present.
Councilmember Brian Noack.
Present.
Councilmember Brian Polarski.
Present.
And Supervisor Diane Bunchkowski.
Here. Okay, we got six present tonight and one absent. Items of discussion, first off, we have Ray Johnson from Wendell here to give us a presentation on the HVAC update. Okay, and Paul Polarski from Engineering.
Hi, everyone. Ray Johnson and John Rowan are here from Wendell. John did the analysis for the generator and Ray's in charge of the HVAC. It was an approval that you guys did back in March. These are kind of the results. Kim, if you wouldn't mind pulling up email, both reports will be on the screen. And that's when John and Ray briefly described what they found. Thank you.
So, we're gonna let John go first because his is much simpler and much more easily to describe, so I'll let him go first.
How you doing? John Rowan from Wendell, electrical engineer. So, what we did was, we came out here and took a look at the generator that you have that provides backup power for this building. There's desire to have it back up the entire building currently. It backs up a portion of the building, but it doesn't do the whole, the entire building. So, I took a look at what was connected to it and also looked at a year's worth of utility bills to see what the load is on the generator. The existing generator is 100 KW. Your load on the building is, at the peak, is about 152 KW. So, the existing generator is just a little bit too small to back up your entire facility. So, taking that into consideration, I looked at sizing a generator that would power the entire facility. That works out to be about a 200 KW generator. Because of the size of the generator, we can't put it back in the same, inside the building where it is because there's not enough air. You need a certain amount of air in and out in order for the generator to operate properly. So, we would have to stick it outside. The location I picked was kind of a little bit off in the parking lot, kind of in the middle. We could kind of hide it back there so it wouldn't be so obtrusive, kind of up against the building. We'd have to rework the service equipment you have a little bit in order to back up the whole facility. But, you know, then when the project was complete, the entire facility would be backed up on a generator. So, if you lose power, you'd have heating, all lights, your data, everything that operates in this building would be backed up by the generator and be able to stay in operation. The total cost for removing the old generator and installing the new one, we estimated at around $300,000 based on current costs and quotes we received from generator manufacturers. So, that would basically cover the cost for the entire project. It would be natural gas powered, so you wouldn't have any diesel fuel. It would just, you know, automatically operate if there was an outage. So, that's basically the gist of the study. Do you guys have any questions?
Can you tell us exactly where in the parking lot you were? Or can Paul, do you know? Can you explain it?
I've got a drawing.
Yeah, that's still a topic we're kind of...
Right.
Okay.
But currently, Diane, we're thinking in the very back corner where the recent amount of traffic is. Again, Mark Crystal and I kind of worked that out and think we'll be able to trim the fat off that place a little bit. Doing some of that work in-house.
Okay.
I shouldn't say house per se, but through a contractor. And we've done the equipment operators in the past.
Mm-hmm.
And we can put that in next year's bid because the timing of getting generators is astronomical. You could wait six months, six, nine months for the ones to run at the center of the stable open for some time and it's not gonna get any better. So, that's something that size.
Okay. Great.
I had a question on that. Putting the generator outdoors, is that gonna have any impact on the shelf life of generator and other equipment?
No. It's very typical to put generators outdoors. They come with a weatherproof enclosure, so water and all that can't get in. The ones today are all, the paint lasts a lot longer than it used to because it's electrostatically applied, so they don't typically have any shorter lifespan by putting them outside.
Gotcha. Just wanted to confirm.
How big is this thing that has to go way back there? There's nothing closer to the building, like even on this side?
Well, exactly. We can look at different locations. The reason why you want to put it over there is because it's closest to the electric service.
Oh, okay.
The further you go away, it costs you in cable, wire, and conduit.
Hmm.
So, the closer you can get it to the building, it becomes cheaper.
Diane, just to jump in, so if you look at the ones at the police department, that's a little bit bigger. The ones, but I think we're comparable to the one at the senior center.
Mm-hmm.
And these are in the streets, so they're somewhat isolated. We did the one green by the senior center, think it would match the grass. Not really. It's green.
Yeah.
But the further away, the less obtrusive, sort of that's what we're trying to look at. And again, there's no selection set this on, and that might be costly as well.
Mm-hmm. Okay, that's good.
How many inches of water column is that gonna use?
Seven to 12 is what it uses.
So, that's what, a one-inch main?
For the gas line?
I'd have to look at it. It will definitely be bigger than a one-inch for that, probably more inch or quarter size, about that size. If it's inch and a half, but it's gonna depend on how far we get away from the service, right? We'll just have to look at it. It's not gonna be huge, but it'll be, you know, it's gonna be airside.
So, you've got enough cubic inches coming out of the furnace system?
We'd have to work with, look at, well, you have medium pressure delivery, so it should be okay. They may have to change the meters out, that's what, that might have happened. But that would be up to, that would end up being up to National Fuel Gas or whoever your gas provider is. They'd have to look at the meter set and, yeah.
In regards to costs, is there any further costs with annual maintenance or maintenance agreements or something like that annually?
Yeah, there is, and I would assume you guys have some sort of an agreement.
We put a contract out, Brian, every other year, and it's a maintenance contract with all of our generators. We put it out competitively. Penn College out at this time, but in the past, it's been very competitive. We usually have these three to maybe five, maybe nine. But that generator, nothing from electrically come with it one year. Anything beyond that, we can put on schedule.
And is there anything about this generator that's proprietary to where we're locked in and can't do bids? You know, we see that often with HVAC systems with train or whatnot. At least my experience is that it's proprietary and only train can work on train.
Well, something like this, we can list one as basis to resign, but we don't have to provide it through. We can't lock anyone, as you know. When they spec out the sizes and what we're dealing with, then it's competitive. So, contractors that are looking to do the installation are competitively bidding the actual equipment. So, that's, you know, but nothing changes. So, if the unit's the unit, if the name is Train or it's Penn or whatever the case may be, it's all meeting the criteria of the fact. Water cold.
It's air cold. Air cold.
It's with a regular radiator on it from the weather cloud. Same I think.
Any other questions before we move on? Okay, thank you.
So, I looked at the HVAC system and the first thing I do is we kind of look at the existing conditions to understand what limitations we might have in a 100-year-old building. You end up with a few limitations. It's wood construction in certain areas and things like that, so you end up with, your floor-to-ceiling heights are kind of limited and with the drop ceiling downstairs, you get even less, so you have very little room to run duct work. So, that's one of the conditions you see when we start looking at these systems, trying to look at, look at, you know, what are gonna be the impediments to putting in a new system. Looked at or got the information from Stoll Environmental about potential ACMs, asbestos and lead and having to deal with that. That's another factor we have to deal with. You have some, so that kind of plays into our thinking when we're trying to analyze what system you might want to have. Then, we looked at the system you have existing. You're comprised of unit ventilators like this one here and the other ones in the space, which I understand can be kind of noisy for you folks, and so you have a little bit of an issue with those.
Yeah, we had to turn them off today.
Yeah.
We can turn them on, so you can hear them.
No, I thought that hurt. But it's understandable, they're in the space and they have relatively large fans in them at times, especially about that size, and they move quite a bit of air. So, it can tend to be noisy, so you're thinking about that. And then you think about the units that exist here, which are packaged terminal air conditioners. We call them acronyms, like all engineers do, PTAC units. And you use once-through-water, city water, to cool them for cooling. And then you have electric heat, electric coils in them for heating.
Heat pumps?
They're not heat pumps. They're just, they're standard, old-school, packaged terminal air conditioners with once-through-water that, that's how they use, that's how they cool the space. And you go straight electric heat, so you're just spinning the dial when you're running it. It's not like you're getting heat, the heat pump work out of them. So, and then the other thing that we noticed, or I noticed when I walked around is that you really do have limited ventilation in the building. These units, the unit ventilators can bring air in. You have a rooftop unit that doesn't appear to operate any longer, but it only serves one space. So, ventilation comes down to just operable windows in each of the spaces. So, that's something we'd like, you'd like to consider. Operable windows are fine. We've got a problem with it, but it's uncontrolled air. Every time you open, every time you open the window, you know, somebody can just send heat or cooling out the window whenever they want if it's not, if they're not getting enough ventilation, right? So, after we looked at that, we really started looking at, there's really two types of air conditioning systems, generally speaking, at airside, which is like a rooftop or a furnace in your house, right? Or you have ones that reject heat or pulling heat with piping or water or refrigerant. And the issue you have with installing a ducted system, an airside system, is that you have large duct work. And you have to get down through the building. You're gonna end up probably having to do some cutting in some of the structural supports and re-curve adapters.
Curve adapter.
The whole, it's a lot of work. And you don't have a heck of a lot of room between the original ceiling and the old ceiling. And that old ceiling, that's only about 14 inches, maybe a little less, from the bottom of the old, of the new ceiling to the bottom of the old ceiling. So, take out for a couple inches for being able to remove it. You've got lights that protrude up into it. You really end up with about eight inches of room, and you're really gonna have a tough time running duct work through there. So, you're probably gonna end up having to install a new ceiling, drop it down. Well, that's where your asbestos is showing up, is in the ceilings. So, you really would like to stay away from a ducted system if you can. So, we looked at a number of piping-based systems, water-based and refrigerant-based systems, and really brought it down to two, which have a lot of flexibility. One is a water-source heat pump system, and in that system, you run water through a loop out to a bunch of units that would roughly sit in the same spots that you have now. And then you, we looked at the system called a VRF system, which is variable refrigerant flow. It uses refrigerant to move heat, heat and cooling to the various spaces, and you can buy it in a heat pump version. So, we looked at that. In both, the idea with the heat pump that would be nice for this application is that you're all-electric and let's try to take advantage of moving some heat around to save, save some money when we're able to. In the dead of winter, when it's really cold, you're gonna still have to add some electric heat, has to have to do that. But let's save as much money for the town as we can. So, we were looking at heat pump systems almost right away. And they both do a nice, nice job of saving energy and they don't take up a lot of room to install them, so that's why we honed in on those.
Those are installed in the wall, right?
No, not necessarily. So, a VRF system has cassettes or console units, much like the stuff you have in the home, much like the water-source heat pumps. They're a little smaller, they're quieter. They end up being quieter because the compressors are moved outside the space, right? The, with the water-source heat pump, the compressors reside in the unit, in the space. So, you have to take more time and more care at quieting those water-source heat pumps down because those compressors can be loud, and you'll notice the sound of them. And then you're gonna want to slow the air down to run them at low speed to try to keep the air noise down as well. So, the, when we were finishing up, and it's in the report and when we're looking at it, what we really did settle on is the VRF system because of, because of the lower noise, because it's a little bit smaller unit. They're actually a little bit better energy-wise than the water-source heat pump, that's the standard one. Now, I want to talk about something that Paul brought up to me and I heard from my office, and that was about some geotherm, a thought about geothermal heat pumps. There's a little bit different discussion...
That's maybe what I was thinking about.
Yeah, so there's a little bit different discussion when you talk about traditional water-source heat pump and geothermal.
Frost line, though, if you talk about geothermal, you talk about frost line.
Well, depends on how you install your wells. If you go to coils, you have to get below that frost line. If you put wells in, you're gonna drill 400 feet anyway.
55 degrees.
55 degrees when it gets down deep into the, into the, you know, it's down past probably about 50 feet, you start to destabilize. And then you're gonna drill a well and it's gonna go down about 400 feet. The only reason I say 400 feet is because you can drill more wells with less depth. It really just comes down to heat rejection and length of pipe. So, you need so much length of pipe to reject so much heat, and that's how you determine, end up determining the depth or the number of wells or the combination of both. You usually run a program, that's a model, to figure out what you're doing with that to reject that heat. But, so, if you, if you think about, if you're thinking about the water-source heat pump geothermal type, you have to understand that you're looking at about 20,000, $10,000 to $20,000 per well. And if you're trying to do it as a part of a district one, I did some quick math, you'd have something like 25 to 30 wells, and you can imagine how much money that turns into pretty quickly. So, there are grants available to qualifying projects, but that grant is not automatic. You're gonna, you get put into, with the program I'm talking about, you end up having to compete for the grant. There is a limited amount of money, so there's no guarantees you're going to get the grant. So, it becomes a matter of, you know, what system, NISERTA sort of hands it out and they're gonna look at, they're gonna look at what has the biggest bang for the buck. What can they, what can they sell to people and use as demonstrations? And it becomes them trying to focus on bang for the buck and being able to demonstrate it, so.
Most of it's rural, period.
Yeah, actually, what they're really looking for is not so much rural. They're actually looking for campus settings like big colleges. That's what they're typically looking for. So, if you want to look into that, you can. The issue is, it slows you down. NISERTA is not fast, right? And then you have to give them a study before they'll, to say, hey, this is something that's going to, this is going to, has a potential of working. They have to say, okay, go ahead and finish your study. So, then it's an investment again. And if you just do the conversion to a VRF system, you can get rebates without having to go through studies because you're using a heat pump and you're doing electrification. So, that they will be looking for that.
We have worked with NISERTA before.
Mm-hmm.
Actually, we have our lobbyist, Camille Brandon, here today, who was very instrumental. We have become a clean energy community, a designated one by NISERTA.
Right, yeah.
And I did get some of those grant opportunities, so I...
Yeah, it's just something that they have to analyze, so it takes time to do those studies. It's not, it's not a small investment. It's not a short amount of time, and there's review periods. If you, if you go with the VRF system, you're gonna save some time.
We've been waiting two years now for this, so...
Okay. Well, I don't know if there's, I don't know if the, if you got federal money and if there's a time limit on it or anything like that, so.
Yeah.
So, if there is, that's the one concern.
Well, that's true, too. We have ARPA money reserved, so I think we do, right, Brian Kraus? Do we have ARPA money reserved for this new HVAC?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
So, I don't know, is there a time limit on...
Yeah, by 2026, we have to have it used.
Yeah, it's not that bad.
As long as we have it all allocated and combed.
Allocated, yeah, and combed, yeah. Okay. That's not too bad. That's actually reasonable.
No, but whatever's the most efficient, and I don't want, I want to be on the cutting edge. I don't think we'd want to go just settle for something because it's faster either. We've waited a long time.
Completely up to you. They're both, there's, they're both great systems, right?
Mm-hmm.
So, it's a, the only reason in the report we study for, we settled, we fell on top or went and decided on the VRF system is for the reasons I was talking about. It does, there's a number of advantages, but there are also things we can do within a water-source heat pump to quiet them down, to make them, to make them, you know, fit the building more easily, things like that.
Okay.
So, it, the difference in terms of decision-making between the two is very small. So, we would go either way.
Okay.
I would see ductless heat pumps would probably be the most economical way to go with inverted drives.
Water-source heat pumps and the VRF systems are price comparable until you start drilling wells. And then your capital costs for those wells is quite high. So, and one other thought is if, if you did not want to look at drilling wells immediately, what we can do is you can install a water-source heat pump job, and we go with low, low, low-temperature heat pumps. And then when you decide you want to, if you want, if and when you want, decide to drill some wells, hook it up, and you're ready to go. So, it's just a matter of selecting the right heat pump.
Any other council members?
Yes, we got some answers.
Yeah. I guess we wouldn't know until we put it out to bid, too, so. Paul or Mark?
Yeah.
Did you want to chime in?
Yeah.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yes, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna follow up on what Ray's talking about just briefly. So, Pat, myself, and Mark BFL had an opportunity to talk to another gentleman from Wendell who specializes in this, and I'm not stepping on toes, Ray. But not only do we need to consider what we're doing for Town Hall, but if it's a campus project with the wells and the geothermal, need to consider the balance of the buildings as well. So, every existing system is gonna be obsolete if we decide to go that route. So, yes, there's money, money's available. As Ray had mentioned, it's not, put your name in a hat, there's gotta be a study that's gotta be produced courtesy of like a firm like a Wendell or some of their competition at the value about $10,000, which is not reimbursable courtesy of that grant. But anything beyond that point could be. So, if we are selected, there is about a 50% match. So, you know, but we're talking, and I'll be very general with dollars, we're talking about a $10 million project, and if we get 50%, well, obviously, $5 million would be the cost of the town. And the payback, unlike, unlike streetlights, which we'll touch bases a little bit on that, too. And the payback, this, again, this according to the gentleman that specializes is around 40 to 50 years. So, we need to look at that as a whole and our, is this campus significant enough? Or we talk, is it more for colleges? And we need property, we need land to do this as well. We haven't really talked about. I have a very small copy of our overall campus study that we have showing parking lots, buildings, topography. There's not a lot of room for this. And, you know, I, I had a difference of wells, the gentleman I spoke to had placed it more at 100 wells, and about each one about a 15-foot by 15-foot area. Again, 400-foot deep. So, that's, that's something to consider. If we want to take this serious, then we probably want to move on this quickly and consider bringing in a firm like Wendell to perform the study to see if this is a viable solution for us as a town. So, that would probably need to be something that will be discussed relative. I can put it through in an email, or do we stop it right now and we continue towards the VRF system or the other water pump system that Ray had mentioned? In the report, the VRF, which was recommended, was 850. The heat pumps were seven and a quarter. Again, those are relatively, I don't want to say shot-in-the-dark numbers, but pretty current, I would say, Ray. So, that's what we're looking to deal with. Unfortunately, when Mark Crystal and I put these ARPA funding together, which I'll get to in just a minute, I had brought in some contractors who had did some work for the town in the past, and I leaned on them for some hard numbers. Unfortunately, that is one that came in grossly under what was budgeted from ARPA originally that we agreed upon. And then I guess I'll just bleed right into the capital projects that I passed out in front of you.
Mm-hmm.
The first one with all the pretty yellow colors on it is, is the ARPA capital projects that are currently either ongoing...
Kim, can you put that up on the screen?
Yeah, put on, yeah, that's, that's the one for me, Kim.
Hey, Paul?
Yeah.
Real quick, one last thing in the deal, I think.
Yeah.
Okay. Keep in mind, 500 yards away is a bird flight, it's a large bull.
Yeah.
Okay? So, God knows what was sitting on, you're talking about 400 feet.
True.
Okay?
Yeah.
And we're afraid of the rock, whatever.
Yeah.
Probably.
Well, then, one, then, right, in the area, hopefully.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, 400 feet's a 40-story building. I mean, that's, that's like the M&amp;T Plaza building. I mean, that's, that's one, one hole. So, it's just something to consider.
Yeah, absolutely.
There it is. Thanks, Kim. It's the, yeah, this is the one. So, all these projects that you see in the, in the budgeted grant aisle in the middle here?
Those were all kind of pre-approved by the board.
Hard-line dollar numbers, we're pretty comfortable with all these numbers now that we got in. The ones that are in green are the ones that have already been either completed or they've been awarded, and currently, they're in the works. We talked about some of the generator jobs that we're doing. One for the, one large one to handle the record center and three standalones to help our pumping stations at the sewer department. We have one, one, one coming at the end of November and one coming in January, and there's still no guarantees on that. So, those were awarded, like we said, back in March, so this is what's happening, and it's no surprise to anyone on the board what's going on with getting materials. The town parks, police, the electric signs, that was awarded, that's underway, that's scheduled for November. But I think more importantly is, is the items that have not yet gone, either gone to bid or looked at beyond where we're at now. And where we're at now is the updated pricing for the generator, for the HVAC, for the window replacement, and our newfound friend asbestos, which has reared its ugly head again, that it's in the window cock at the sills of the windows. So, that's another, another fly in the ointment, as they say, but we have, we have the drawings complete and ready for bid. They were sent to Kim. We don't have, we can look at them, we don't have to look, it doesn't matter. It's just some pretty drawings that were ready for bid. I just wanted to keep you guys in the loop and get these things moving, continue to keep these things moving, so we're not wasting a lot of time. You know, the HVAC, Diane, you had mentioned before, we've been waiting a while, but at the same token, this ARPA has really done wonders for us. And in the past, unfortunately, we've gone the cheap route, and we did it in Alexander. We replaced rooftop units. We replaced rooftop units in kind, which probably wasn't the answer. But unfortunately, it was a budgeted answer and we, and we learned. It's running fine. It's the, the problem is it probably wasn't, we probably should have considered what Ray had mentioned in these VRF systems as well at the same time. Unfortunately, it would have been three to four times the amount of money that we spent on that project. But I'm hoping to get your blessing. So Kim, if you just scroll down to the bottom there, there, there's that final number. We're at about $2.5 million now for funding. And again, these have all been relatively pre-approved projects with the caveat that we didn't have those hard numbers in place. Now we're pretty comfortable. I mean, even, even the HVAC at the pump station, there was a report that was done. John Nichy brought in Nussbaumer to do a report. That was $90,000 below budget as well. In, in fairness, that report was three years old. I still can't believe prices are going where they are, but it doesn't help us to wait. I, I think this is the wave. And if it goes down, it's going to be very minimal and probably not worth that wait. So that's one entity that I wanted to talk to you about. Sure, Brian?
Not to get too far off topic, but I know there's been discussions about what we're going to do with the basement of Town Hall and some of the remodeling there.
Yeah.
So I want to work that into a potential ductless system. Do you think we're going to have to get into the ceiling regardless of what we do on HVAC?
No, no. Actually, I mean, I'm actually glad you brought that up. There's, there's so much to talk about, it's a little time and I'm, I'm trying to get through this because the other million dollar man's behind me. So what, what we, what we looked at, we, we met with the board one time with, with the committee that Diane had created. It was a very positive meeting. We got a lot of the, a lot of the larger things out of the way and a lot of the preliminary questions answered. But in answer to your question, we don't anticipate doing major demo to this building. We're, we're relo, we're potentially relocating offices, which again, that's a discussion, probably a whole work session in by itself to discuss that. We're not ready to go there yet, but I can tell you that Ray brings up a good point. The ceiling tiles in Town Clerk's office and in the adjacent hallway, they came back hot for asbestos as well. So we don't really want to disturb that unless absolutely necessary. And even what office is moving, we're, we're not really messing with the interior walls because the interior walls are nearly as thick as the exterior walls. This, this building is unique to itself. You know, the consummate brick house, as they say. It's literal. It's, it's inside and it's out. And it's, it's difficult to be knocking down walls like you do in new construction and set beams and columns and just have at it. We don't have that luxury here, unfortunately. So I think Ray's, Ray's proposal is, is logical. Yes, it costs more money, but it's, it's the right solution to the problem. But again, I hope I answered your question. It should, it will not impact what we intend to do with the office changes in this building.
Didn't you do some upgrades downstairs when we had that other ARPA money from the county?
We did. And stop me if I'm wrong, Ray. There is, there is a cartridge VRF system already that was put in. Yeah, downstairs. So that, that was step one, if you will. So this is adding on to that project. Yeah, but that's, yes, we did, Diane. And that, and that took care of the old system partially because still how we treat tax payments when people come in, the heating and cooling, it's doors open. It's somewhat ridiculous, but we're looking to cross that bridge as we progress.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
So that in a nutshell is, is ARPA. And again, we're already past the half hour here.
What, um, so what was the old estimate we were going to use for all these?
I, I, I reached out to Brian on that. I guess there, it was, I want to say-
So it's more now?
It's more now. Oh, yes, it's more now. Probably about $500,000 more. Yeah.
So I'm going to have to have Brian Kraus try to put something together for the next meeting where we are with all this.
Exactly. And if, and you know, if, if, if it comes down to, you know, picking cherries because it's a, it's, it's a budgetary thing, I think Town Hall's a priority. I think we can all agree on that. There's a lot of, a lot of items that, you know, if, if we're doing the HVAC, we need to address the windows. If we're doing the HVAC and the windows, we need to address the generator. You know, the elevator, even the elevator price alone, I mean, $120,000 to modernize an elevator. It's not new. It's a modernization of such.
Yeah, oh, so that, is that on here for-
It's on there, yeah.
Where?
Elevator, it's item number four under the Town Hall items, Diane. Elevator modernize? I can show you.
Are you sure it's under? Okay. All right. Oh, okay.
Yeah, so we did, we did get an estimate back on that from Bison Elevator, who specializes in that type of repair. And, and again, it's, it's sad to say, that's the modernization. And we, and we saw that rear its ugly head when we bid out the Alexander elevator recently and got stung with that, too. That was grossly over budget.
But that's, something has to be done, though.
Exactly.
I mean, today it didn't look like it was going to go for me.
Same thing. Yeah, so it hasn't minded of its own.
Sitting there.
Yeah, but, but, but unfortunately, based on, on how we do things in the town, anything over $35,000, we need to competitively bid. So again, that's, that's, that's not proprietary. We need to put a package together on that as well. And unfortunately, as we all know, bid processes are not done overnight. We need to keep these, get these things going, give them time to bid. And by the time we get it awarded and resolutions written, contracts and, and bonding, insurance, it, it takes some time.
So, and it doesn't include the Town Hall basement renovations or any other renovations you want to do in Town Hall?
No, no, this, no. Everything you see are, is everything that we talked about via ARPA. Now, the next page is a different page. So that, that's capital improvements that if we did not have ARPA spending, these are traditional capital improvements that we've been doing for a number of years in the past. And like I said, if you guys don't mind turning the page, Kim, if you don't mind going to this scrolling down to the next, and again, I hope these colors make sense. They don't, they make sense to me. I hope they make sense to you, but-
You'd have to explain it to us, though.
Yeah, yeah, and that's what I'll do. So everything you, so, so the top two, let's get through those. Those are the elevator at the Alexander building that we're going to rebid. We're going to get rid of the lobby. That, that was just put us way over budget. And it wasn't 100% necessary. It was, it was a want and probably not a need. But with the quantity of people coming in and out of the building, we wanted to make room for that, for that transition between parents and children. They're starting the new programs in the youth bureau and I, and I think the Boys and Girls Program stops when the youth in rec program begin.
Just want to stop you really quick. Getting that lobby out of there, it doesn't have any impact or security or anything like that, right?
No.
I know we've got a lock on the door and-
Right, exactly. Yeah, so nothing's changed in that regard, Brian. So everything you see in brown are things that I'm asking for from a, from a town capital account that we financed in the past. Now, I sent you guys an email. I don't know if you had an opportunity. It came out a little bit late yesterday. In the past, we, we procured about $1 million a year roughly. And it came in low, it came in high at times for work in our town buildings. Well, we, we've hit a lot of the major projects, a lot of them. So these are the ones that have kind of been kicked to the curb for a number of years. And now they've become a priority because they're trying to keep on a schedule. Like Mark would with paving, we're trying to keep on a maintenance schedule as we would with our own homes. So just quickly, if we look at, I shouldn't say quickly. If you go to the Alexander Community Center, item number one, we, we recently caulked the windows. There was a lot of infiltration. And what we found out while we did it, the steel lintels on the building are rotting. That's a vintage 1920s building as well. And the steel lintel, just for verification, is, it, it holds the masonry or the brick in this case above the window openings. And those window openings are, 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 are larger than normal. They're over 21 feet wide. When you get into that, unfortunately, it's, it's not an easy fix. You need to, the, the steel's starting to rot. I think Mark's going to help us pull up a picture of what we have to look at. This, the, the $234,000 is literally for the west side of the building only, not the whole building. And it's a big building, there's a lot of big openings. So that's the weather side. That's the side that's gotten beaten up. That's the worst side. If, if one of those fails, it's going to create much more of a monster. And just a second, I think Mark will bring up a picture of that. Yeah, so here you go. So the, the arrows you see points to what's, to, to the steel lintel and that's above the window opening. So as you can see, there's some bends in it. It's, it's rotting. It's deteriorating. And from the contractor, Ari Kelly's been a, been a friend of the town for a number of years. They've done a lot of work for us. So as you can see, the lintel itself is warped. It's leaving a gap, which is another air opening, which is beyond the caulking, that causes heating and cooling issues and, and a multitude of other, of other, other problems. Mark, go to the next picture or scroll down. Yeah, so this, so, so the weight of the stone, it's, there's, there's a stone header above the, above the steel lintel and then it goes back into brick. But as you can see, the, the stress from that or from the steel not doing its job, you're getting these stress cracks inside of the stone as well, which causes more problems with masonry. So this is not a pretty job. It's a, but it's a job that needs to be addressed. And it's not cheap to do. I mean, you know, we're looking at a quarter million dollars to, to, to do this job properly. Just scroll down a little bit more, Kim, if you don't mind. I think it's even a further close-up picture. I mean, yeah, so that's the stone. It's, go to the next one. Yeah, so that, as you can see, the, the rot and the deterioration in the, in the pieces of steel that hold all that masonry place. I don't want to beat this to death because like I said, we're not in the time position to do it. And I guess, do you want me to keep yapping about all these things that we need to look at? We can do that.
Well, what are the most important ones? I mean, I guess this, this one is and I, I don't know, but I think we could, might be able to use some more ARPA for this.
Well, well, what-
Depends what the board wants to do.
I guess if, you know, I should jump around, too. And in fairness to, to Chief, who's behind me, you know, part of ARPA as well, Tim Myers was gracious enough to fund the police. It's, it's a proposed project of like a pole barn, which is going to double as a classroom and like a training center for, he's, he's, he's promised them $500,000. Well, Mark Befeld and I, we've gotten some prices together from local contracts, contractors. And unfortunately, $500,000 doesn't get you what it used to. So if that was one of the ones that we'd consider for ARPA, that's, that, that might be realistic. And again, the, you know, board would have to decide on that and Chief would have a lot of time. But, you know, if, I'll, I'll have him speak to that and the necessity of, of how that would help him and his department moving forward, especially in today's day and age. Again, I'm jumping all over the place because I want to do this in a timely manner. But Diane, you mentioned about importance, so-
That's important, though, too.
Yes.
Especially since we did get some funding from the legislator.
We did.
So really it minimalizes the expense on the town.
Yes, absolutely.
That we could use that.
And the range itself is basically outdoors. So you need something that's-
Exactly.
Protecting you from the elements, you know?
Exactly. There's the chief.
If I could jump in just one second on that. We, we've met and it, it is disappointing to hear how far money goes or not how far money goes more appropriately. You know, the, the money that, that we've secured through the county is secured. We've started the paperwork on that. That's there. It's, it's already been awarded. The conversations we've had with Paul and his staff basically revolve around, do we do it as cheap as we possibly can just to get something done? Or do we find a little bit more money and do it right? And, and that's, you know, that's our ask. That's why Paul has, has put that on, on the capital projects list is, you know, we, we all know how, how critical, you know, police training is to have something out there. And we're really hoping that we can get something that is going to be what we need for the next 10, 20 years rather than just make it fit with the money that we have and, and not get what we really need. So the numbers are, are, are what Paul's bringing up to us. I wish the $500,000 would have us a, a big, beautiful building, but sadly, that's not where we're at.
Do you think this number you're showing right now for 750,000, do you think that's fair right now? Or do you think the longer we go down the road, it's going to go up more? And, and Chief, for you, I mean, you kind of answered my question. You're projecting 10, 20 years from now, the use and the need. And, and you're not just trying to design it for your need now with expansions and, and all that stuff. So you're going to go a little bit larger than now? Well, well, we're, we're trying to keep, you know, we, we're, the, the first thought, Brian, was to keep it within budget. But keeping within budget, you're looking at a building that's, it's just not conducive. Just like, don't even do it. So one of the thoughts was, why don't we wait? Why don't we pocket the money, try and get some, you know, different funds, different sources somewhere else? But in answer to your question, the prices, there's no sign that pricing for contracting is going down, nor has it in the past 20 years. But it's just gotten progressively worse over the last two and three years. But it's not going to go down. I, I don't see it, Mark. I don't know if you see it in your business, but it's not going down. He sees it in his blacktop and his, and his oil-related products. It's, it's not happening. So this is probably the time to act on it. And if it was ARPA available, like I said, it, it does, it does bring, you know, take the albatross off the town's neck. And, you know, and it's, and it's a well-used facility. They, they've invited other towns. It's a good training center for obvious reasons. So that's why I'm, I'm, you know, trying to help put the feather in the catter.
The, the reason why I ask that question is, is that 750 right now costs? Or is that 750 projecting that costs are going to go up a little bit, too? Because, I mean, I built a, a new, we built a new community center and, you know, a $5 million budget. And, and we got to the point where we had to cut costs and we're cutting out where outlets are going because we're over budget, you know?
Yeah, there's, there, there's, there's levels that we could take this building. We can get it up, we can get it insulated, we can get the roof on it, we can get windows, overhead doors in place. There may be some things that we have to weigh down and I think the chief's aware of that as well. What we're currently doing is we're, we, the, the chief approved some soil testing on site. We're scheduled for the second week of July to get that done. And they're testing two, two sites. And the problem with that site is, maybe you well know, is that's been a site for, for fill in the past. We brought some up to grade, we did it properly. There may be some other suspect areas that we're looking into. We're trying to find the right area to be cost-effective. So the closer to the fence line, the closer to the entry is the preferred place to put it because it keeps costs down for the utility extensions. The preferred spot might not be the best spot because the foundations are going to increase the cost by probably $100,000. We, we don't know that yet. And I, and I'm not, I'm not at, at liberty to say what the foundation costs are until we get the soil test results back, which would be by the end of July.
Okay, so then go back to this sheet.
Yeah.
And then we need time for Mark Crystal's.
Yeah. I'm sorry, Mark. I always do this to you. But Diane, you asked the question, what's important? So I mean, I, I look at like, like, let's, let's get the Anna Reinstein Library out of the way. We did it with the Julia. This is not going to happen until next calendar year. Glenn, the gentleman in charge of that facility is going to chase down these grants. He's done a wonderful job in the past. It's a no-brainer. It's a 50-50 match. The town pays, it's a town-maintained facility, the Anna Reinstein at Harlem. We, again, I got a price on the roof. It's a year and a half old. I did not change those numbers. I, I really don't. I, I didn't want to chase that yet because it's next year's pricing. But we wouldn't be touching that until at least 2023. So he's pretty confident by waiting the year, he'd be a better candidate to get the monies that will be available next year. There were 20 people that were going after the monies this year and he didn't feel that he had a good shot of getting it. So that would be next year's program.
I think it's also, just so you know, is the handicap egress on the Anna Reinstein Library is under Monica Wallace's radar, too.
Okay, good, no.
Be able to get, I'm not sure I-
That'd be great, yeah.
But she had mentioned it to me.
There's a meeting room in the facility. I'm not sure when was the last time you guys were in there. It's a poorly designed area with a very narrow door. If, in the case of an emergency, no one's getting out of that space. It's, it's, it's a relatively inexpensive solution to a problem. So, and again, as I chime on, I mean, John Chiselski worked out of the Parks Facility Building for a number, number of years. There's photos of that with, as well. that with, as well. Again, I don't want to drag this on too long, but that's seen better days. That's been on that list. These are real numbers that we got prices on relatively in the last month. It's under Town Park Garage. The Senior Center, that's been talked about for a long time, too. I see Carrie and Rachel are here, and I don't want to throw either one under the bus, but if CDBG money was available, that'd be a good project for that. Alexander, we talked about, so the other, the only other thing to really, well, there's a Stigelmeier Park Comfort Stations, which Timmy has, has taken liberty, helped us out with that as well.
And he's coming to the next work session, correct?
Yeah, we're going to try and fit him in for that, he'd like to say a few words about that. And Mark will help spend the balance of the money that's coming from that, and he'll speak, he'll speak to that in just a minute. The Lawson Center, that's been a topic of conversation. Doesn't need to be done this year, but it does need a roof, it needs some TLC, it does not have handicapped access. That's been kind of falling apart right under our eyes. To, to me, and I think even Jill had mentioned in the past, it's not, it's underutilized for currently what we have. Jill seemed to think it would be a great place to use in the south towns for programs. It's not, it's currently not, we can't do anything with it, it's not accessible. Therein lies the problem. So, that's another project. I mean, all the ones that you see on here, and in Brown at least, Diane, in answer to your question, are what I would, I would consider a priority in the next couple of years. And again, the, the bottom-line number for all these projects in, in Brown is just over 1.25, 1.276.
Okay.
Yeah, and with that, I think, probably in fairness, I, I know we have other gentlemen waiting to speak here as well, so. Any questions?
Anybody?
Not sure if you'd be able to answer this, or maybe Mark Crystal can speak to it, but the, the request for the George Urban Pump Station, I know it's, at least on the actual physical pump side, that it's aged equipment, and there's work that's needed there. This talks about reworking the door and the beams, I mean, and we're talking about priorities, that's something I, we're going to need it down the road, so I'd really like to see us get this done here.
That's, that's a minimal item on, on what Mark will speak to, but that's probably a good time for you to jump in, Mark. Thank you.
And I had one more question for you before you roll into all of it. So, George Urban Pump?
Sure.
And then, I'm sure you're going to cover it, but the, the asphalt costs.
Sure, exactly. So, the first thing, getting back to George Urban Pump Station, what Paul's numbers are strictly for the building itself, okay? That station, like we briefly talked about before, we are currently in the process of lining out what will be called Sewer Shed Number Four. That's everything that is tributary towards our main pump station. And then, as part of the approved ARPA program, the two siphon eliminations that we're going to do on Mildred and Andres are going to totally change the dynamic of what we need that station to do, okay? So, we're going to need to look at that station probably in '23 or '24 for total complete redesign of what the line of defense needs to be for our residents with that station, okay? So, Paul's numbers are just scared of building and need, need to be doing that. We're going to need to come back, I have an example of that in a second, about how we're going to find things moving forward in the future about how the station needs to be, if that makes sense. Now, what was your question about asphalt, Brian? It's, and again, to touch on briefly what we said, everything in, in our world is increasing. Everything that, that we have done here is, is really increasing. Asphalt's pushing almost $100 a ton, okay? The only way they bid that is they bid what's called an escalator clause in there. So, basically, what that means is, as oil is trading, either it fluctuates up or down, it's still fluctuating up. So, traditionally, we've averaged about $57 to $63 a ton. The last couple of years, right now, we're pushing almost $100, okay? So, I built in some escalators in it, we can absorb that, at least for what we have approved for this year. Moving forward, we need to look at that. One of the things I'm going to briefly bring up, as far as looking at things, last year, if you guys remember, I came to you probably in the fall of last year, September-ish, saying, listen, we need to get out in front of this, and we need to buy materials, okay? We need to start stocking up on pipe, on fittings, on furcles and everything. So, we did that, we followed our purchasing procurement policy, and we jumped the gun, we ordered about a million dollars' worth of stuff, okay? That order just got filled two weeks ago. The last piece just came in. So, we ordered all that stuff on Halloween of last year. So, we didn't see any deliveries until the beginning of March, the order just got finished at the 13th of June. So, the stuff I talk about now for next year, once again, I would respectfully ask that we take a hard look at that, that we once again, look at moving some of this money up to the front end, so I can get bids out, get materials in stock. We have the room for it, whether it be our highway yard, our sewer maintenance yard, and again, of the $30 million we talked about, everything is underway that we discussed, and the reason it is, is because we jumped the gun last year and got product, okay? We're able to build things that others can't build because we have the product that they don't. So, I'd like to be transparent and, and keep that, keep that method moving, if that makes sense. If not, then we're going to have the same problem others have. It's just next to impossible to get our stuff on. Everything that we do is, is petroleum-based and are plastic-based, and both of those industries are in turmoil right now. So, that being said, real quick, Kim, if you don't mind, if you can pull up. Pull up, if you don't mind, the PowerPoint first, Kim, okay? So, again, there's a lot to discuss here, I'll try to be brief as well. I just want to give a quick overview of, of where we are. So, like I said, we discussed things back in March, you guys proved about 15.5 in ARPA funding, you know, all those things are, are underway. If you go to the next slide, Kim, please, this basically shows the seven areas we kind of focused in on with, with the ARPA, okay, which is our New York State Consent Order, which we know has been ongoing for, for a while now, and then the second piece of that, which is our corrective action plan for the order, and then the second piece, or third piece in this case, was upgrades to our Santher Sewer Lift Stations. I sent you guys an email a couple of weeks back. We just went live today with our Union Ellen Station. The last three and a half weeks has been offline. That, that was a major project we, we undertook. We saved about $300,000 by doing that internally, doing it our way, with Louis Eric Allen and his staff and our contracting partners. So, that, that I'm very happy, that was very successful. But again, it's still, we still spent about $300 to get to that point, okay? The other portion of that is a full-depth road reconstruction, products are in, chambers are ordered, I'm looking to start those, probably the beginning of August. Drainage improvement program, that's underway. We successfully rehabilitated and relined all the crossing pipes in what I call the Woods Neighborhood, Birchwood, Hillwood, Penwood, Brentwood, that's all relined, brought back into service, and now our highway crews are doing the secondary drainage improvements in that neighborhood. So, that job's full steam ahead. We are going to start on July 11th, after the Fourth of July break, the improvements to the Transit Hill Neighborhood. So, that stuff's all in order, that's in-house, and that'll be going in the ground here shortly. The town park upgrades as well, playgrounds are on order, shelters on order. They're supposed to be delivered here on the week of July 11th, so that'll be underway. And the last thing is, the road resurfacing program, that we bonded, you guys passed that bond a few meetings ago, so, so we, that's all underway. So, everything we discussed is underway. It's a full plate, but once again, we're managing it internally with our contracting partners, and, and the way we GC things, general contract things, we're really trying to squeeze that as, as best we can with, with the volatility we have with materials. So, if you just go through the next couple of slides here real quick, Kim, here's just snapshots, that's the Union Ellen Station, this shows the bypasses we had set out there, that's the old station on the left-hand side, the new piping and stuff we have on the inside. Again, its perspective shows the outside work we had to do as far as redirecting the flows that come into the station. That station was built in 1942, okay? So, we're going to talk about that station a little bit. We did find one thing out there that we didn't know before, that just goes to show the difference of the wet well, the outside wet well on the left versus now the new epoxy-coated wet well on the right. So, these are just all good major improvements, but like I said, we went live today on that, and that's going to be, you know, serviceable for the next 40 years now, so we're in good shape there. We go to the next one, Kim, this is the Woods Neighborhood, okay? So, that's an example of the corrugated metal pipe that is in that neighborhood on the right-hand side. Once again, that pipe has a 40-year shelf life to it, it's been in the ground 60-plus years. There's nothing left of it. This one here, which probably shows up better on this image here, you can see the bottom of this pipe is completely gone. There's no bottom left, there's nothing there. Luckily for us, we still had the spiritual shape of that, so we were able to line that and get the integrity back, so these pipes are now 100% back to full capacity. So, now we're able to build off of that. And that's a good thing, because these pipes run side yard. They run under garages, under fences, under sheds, they run side yard to side yard to side wired to Dartwood Park. So, being able to reline that and bring that back to life was crucial for us. So, that's also a good thing underway, but again, that lining that was also close to $200,000, okay? These are, these are large things. We, we did what's called UV lining on that new technology. If you've ever gone to a dentist and they put that little blue light in your mouth to, to do the filling, whatever, same principle was that. There's no steam, there's no, there's no smell, there's no obstructions that way. It's a great technology to pull the liner through and they cure it with light. I wasn't going to bring a piece with me as a sample today, but I'm very happy with that, the way that came out. And the next slide just goes to show, I mean, again, we started our resurfacing program, that's Duke Road, anyone who drives by Duke Road, you know, going to Cabalas or anything of that nature across from Galleria Mall, we did it a couple Saturdays ago, that came out well. But once again, to Brian's point, asphalt's pushing $100 a ton, so we're maxed out about what we can do with what we have in front of us. Now, we get into the next slide, so this is what is on our to-do list moving forward. So, we've talked about this before in the past, we talked about this potentially for funding ARPA, and we decided not to at the time. Raymond Street, Raymond Street's currently undergoing a new water main installation on that. If you go to the next couple of pictures, Kim, the next couple of slides, it shows you the condition of the pavement on Raymond Street, okay? There is, in my opinion, nothing left of the street. This is another example of a street that was just built with no inspections, wasn't built to code back in the day when it was built. There's no sub-drainage on it, there's no subsurface on it, there's no stone on there. So, again, there's not going to be much left of this once 716, the contractor that's out there working for Erie County Water does that. In order to bring that back to life, it's a long street, you know, it's got about a budget of about $2 million to do that, okay? The next section, the next slide, Kim, real quick, these are also areas that we're going to begin next year. So, this is off the Clinton City Line border, in the south section of town, there's Shanley Pleasant, Willa Lawn, Meadow Brook, and Griswold. This is what we call our Sewer Shed Number 10. We're going to be there en masse next year with our lining of our sewer system. This neighborhood dates back almost 90 years. If you go back to the next couple of slides on, on, that came up top there, thank you. You know, again, this may look like it's a maintenance issue, it really isn't. Those are cast iron catch basins, they're actually metal boxes that are put in the ground. They're literally one foot by two foot, they're not very effective, they're corroded, they're rotted, they're broken, they just no longer function the way they should. The storm sewers there and the Santher sewers there are all clay tile piping, and we know what that is at 80 years old. So, again, these are just examples of that. So, the good thing is, in that neighborhood, new water mains, one in last year, so that's a good thing that's been done with that. But again, we need to do a lot of work on both our sanitaries and our storms in that little four-block, five-block neighborhood in there. The tune to do that with pavement rehab on the way out is $4 million to take care of, of, of those neighborhoods in there. If you go to the next slide, Kim, thank you. There's still some issues, we still have it unfortunately, because of the nature and the timeframe our town was built, drainage issues and concerns we have, okay? One of them is in an East Elven neighborhood. We're going to be in there in a few months, working on our corrective action plan as far as getting into homes, doing inspections, lining the laterals, doing all the things we need to do with the DEC and that. So, again, the storm sewers there are in need of attention. So, in order to get them up to code, get them up to current standards, giving homeowners areas an ability now to disconnect and get their storm runoff, their INI runoff, out and separated from the Santher Sewer, that's going to help that, okay? We still have some flooding issues, the next slide slows that, and the south side of town off of French Road in the Nancy area. In order to do that, I'm projecting about $1.5 million to accomplish that. The next slide, I just want to throw in real quick-
Can I just chime in?
Yeah.
One second. Pat Bowen and I are in the Erie County Sewer District-
Sure.
-one board, and we were talking with them because they're doing a lot of lining in this area, and I didn't want them upsetting some of the work you've done already by doing their sewer repairs. So, we're going to coordinate with them, and I think Pat's in contact with them.
Sure.
Pat, was that south side of French Road next they were going to do, or was it Mayberry area? I think it was Mayberry, but you're doing that this year?
Yes, Diane, yes. So, actually, you know, Kenyon Brothers is contracted at Erie County Sewer District one, and they are actually lining in, in conjunction with us.
Yeah, so we can-
So, when we were doing our lining, they were lining the Woods Neighborhood with the Santher system.
And then we're just going to-
They're actually lining next week in the Transit Hill area.
Oh, all right, so that's good.
So, everything we're doing now is kind of in hand-in-hand, which is a good thing. Moving forward, we can continue to talk with them.
So, make sure you check with them-
Yes.
-for next year for this south French Road neighborhood.
Absolutely, yes.
So, they can target that-
Sure.
-before you go ahead and do the drainage, and then they have to upset it later on, I don't-
Sure.
-think that's very-
No, exactly, yeah. It's like to minimize the disruption to our residents getting into everything at once, sure.
Yeah.
Doing the best that we can. Yes, absolutely. One of the things we did do when we had the Union Ellen Station down, what I mean by down is, it was a force main that comes out of that pump station, okay? The pump station was built in 1942. Force main's 80 years old, okay? It was put in 80 years ago. Force main is always wet, what I mean by that, always has water flowing through it. So, we really can inspect that when the pumps are operational. Because we had the station down, and we had a bypass set up so we could work on the station, we had the opportunity to inspect that force main. And as I kind of figured, it needs some attention, okay? It is 80 years old. The cast iron pipe that's in there is not the best shape. It's still serviceable for now, we're up live running, but that's something we need to put on our radar. In order to replace that force main, you're looking at about $750,000, okay? So, that's, that's, that's an unforeseen thing. I couldn't see until we took the station offline. Just because, again, we can't get in there, we couldn't televise that main until we were offline. So, that's a big nut, but again, it's an 80-year-old station, and that's unfortunately, the cost of put that main in on that end. So, that's something we need to put on our, our future radar. The next one again is our resurfacing program, I bumped it up a little bit, threw an extra $250,000 on there from this year to hopefully help mitigate the cost of that. The state of New York was kind enough to give us additional funding this year, a few weeks back. At the board meeting, we approved through Town Board Resolution what's called a Pave Our Potholes Program. It's an extra $100,000 to stay through, which is good. Don't know if that program's going to continue. There's now four state programs that we get funding for for asphalt, which is great. So, hopefully they stay, but, you know, if they don't or things change, you know, we need to project out, you know, the cost difference that we're having. So, traditionally, we've been bonding about $1.5 million, we bonded $1.5 million this year, but the, if the cost of asphalt can, can use to stay where it is, we're limited on that, so we need to bump that up a little bit. And then lastly, we'll talk more about this at the next work session when we have Tim here, because they want to do some things in Stigelmeier Park. Stigelmeier Park, I'm sure you've all been in there, is starting to salt some wear. Last time we, we did work in her, on the main entrance in what I call the east side of the park, was in 2001, so that's 21 years ago. So, as the asphalt, as you know, things don't last for 20 years in our environment with salting and things of that nature. So, the parking lots throw some wear and tear, there's some things in there that, that, that we need to put on our radar, and unfortunately, because of the cost of things, that's about a million dollars, okay? But that's, again, at $100 a ton, it doesn't go as far as it used to. But we can talk more on that when we have aerials and images and things of that nature when we talk about that park as a whole. And then, the last thing again is just the splashpads that kind of been kicking around on our capital needs. Once again, both pools are not open this year, you guys know the shortages we have with lifeguards, so those are two assets that once again are just sitting vacant the second year in a row. So, again, if we want to convert them, that's the cost to convert them.
Didn't, didn't we like, commit to possibly using ARPA for some of that? No?
Exactly, Diane, yeah. So, that was, that was tossed around on, on the original ARPA list. The fourth, the three things that were pulled off the original ARPA list were Raymond Street reconstruction that we discussed, the southwest section of town, the Clinton Street neighborhood, which was that Shanley Pleasant, Willa Lawn, Meadow Lawn, Griswold area at $4 million, and then the splashpads at 1.1, and now bumped it up to 1.2 because all the piping and stuff is going higher and higher and higher.
Okay, so I know Camille has worked to apply for some funding, right, from Senator Schumer and Joe LeBrand for at least one splashpad? We don't know if we'll get enough for two. Okay, so.
We can get them, Camille.
If you can, yeah, that, to get it- More specific. And then, maybe we could, all these other things, except for the road resurfacing in the Stigelmeier Park, I think are, are fundable, so.
They will be done, yeah, exactly. But once again, I think that number puts us over what our allocation is from the feds, you know, because we did commit the 15.5 million of, of work that were ongoing, that I just wanted to briefly show you guys that we have going on there, plus the stuff that they committed to Paul already, his, his shopping list there. So, again, I just wanted to bring this to your attention now, so we can have the conversations about, do we want to fund it, and how we're going to fund it, and once again, so that I can hopefully in the fall get out in front of these projects, even though they're going to be constructed in '23, we need to start lining up materials so we have that stuff in hand for '23.
So, Brian Kraus, can you just get us this updated into that ARPA chart? We have an ongoing chart. And see where we are between Paul's and these new upgraded numbers, and put a question mark next to the splashpads-
Sure.
-because we're still waiting to hear about those. I mean, any other board members have anything?
I mean, I, I think we've spent this ARPA money four times now. There's just not enough with the needs throughout the town, and I just want to make sure, and I, and I said at the beginning, that every department's getting a fair shake at it, not to take away anything that, the work that you're doing, it needs to get done also.
Sure.
But I don't want to, you know, commit all of it to engineering and, you know, paving and, and buildings where police might need some, senior services, IT, stuff like that. So, if we can have an updated list of what's already committed, what's available and left, and then what the needs are-
Yeah, that's what we're going to add.
-to go on all that and look at it.
So, use some of that for already for the IT-
Correct, yes, yeah.
-year, and, and, yeah, I mean, these are expenses though, that are going to be passed on to the taxpayers anyway.
And so are the other ones too.
Yes.
So, I, I think we just need to make sure every department has a fair shake at it for their needs also. I've got some questions in regards to all this. Can we make it a practice, now like this PowerPoint here, the, the presentation, can we post that and put it on our website under the engineering tab to where if a resident wanted to go on and see, hey, what is our 2023 infrastructure plan? It's not set in stone, but they can go on and see, and also see, you know, hey, these are the pipes we're dealing with, or these are the roads, and, you know, they kind of get a better image of, of what's going on. I mean, sure, you can watch it on YouTube, so it's already out there, it's not like it's secret information, but if they also were able to just click that, they could answer some questions they may have instead of firing them at us and researching it out or whatnot. In addition to that, I know I've emailed you about Meadow Lawn and, and the board, we took it off the list, you know, previously, but I've had a couple residents email me about that street there being repaved. Did you have a chance to go look at it and see and prioritize, you know?
Yeah, we, yeah, we can adjust that, Brian, yeah. So, luckily, like I said, with the additional dollars that the state threw in through that Pave Our Potholes Program, again, pave our potholes program, again, that's, that's fundable in there now. So that's, we can look at adding that to, I'm going to call that our phase three. We're currently working on phase one. If you guys have seen or not, I mean, everything in the Vern neighborhood now is now done. We started paving there this last Tuesday. The automation that you guys approved for our paper went on. Our papers is, is running fantastic, is making us much more efficient, which is a good thing, especially now with the cost of asphalt. Every, every pound, every ton we can save is, is better for us. So, so that's a good thing. So that's coming up very well. But that is on phase three. Next phase is going up in the Cleveland neighborhood, and then phase three is, is in the, in, I call it the Wegmans neighborhood that they grew up, so yeah, yes.
And, and that would be another document. I think that would be useful on the website under engineering or highway to where when a resident's wondering, when's my street getting paved, you know, and then they can just click on that and see, okay, I'm on phase one, two, three, or I'm not on any phase.
Sure.
You know, it just helps, you know, answer some questions they may have.
Right.
Any other council members have questions from our crystal?
Yeah, I'd like to piggyback off what Mr. Polarski said. I definitely think that we don't, aren't as resourceful enough on our website as what we're doing as a whole, as a town, just all of the project alone that you're representing. I think that we need to get better at presenting things to the constituents on the, the website and just let them know exactly what Brian said, that we need to, you know, be more transparent.
Sure. We could definitely get it along, that's fine, absolutely, yeah.
Well, that, that highway list you could put up there, because that's a definite. I hate to sometimes put up like these proposed because they think that's going to happen. We haven't.
Well, it's set at a meeting, it's on the, on the Zoom video recording.
Well, that's right.
Having it on there as a proposed is no different than saying the proposed strategic plan or whatever, it's now voted on a definite. It's just that proposed. So this is all just a proposed 2023 infrastructure program until budgets are made and then it's approved by the Town Board.
Going back to the force main, what are we talking about in terms of size and the impact on that neighborhood and all that?
It, it's, it's a pretty good situation. What I mean by that is, is we call it the Union Road lateral. So there's a street that parallels Union Road that is ours, it belongs to Chickalago, where the homes front that. So there's a clean path, which I'm happy with for now, that I can get from the pump station up to the intersection of Cleveland Drive and Union Road. Okay, it's going to be an impact on those residents, don't get me wrong, but minimal utility disruption, won't be disrupting any services for the homeowners when we do that. Unfortunately, it is right now a, a 12-inch cast iron force main. Probably going to upsize it a little bit to give us future room down the road if needed. But just the price of, of cast iron pipe right now is, or ductile iron, depending which way you go, is just, is just cost prohibitive, it's tough.
Which that gets to the other question. We don't have to coordinate with the state or anything.
We do not.
It's all on town property.
Correct, yes, yep.
And is that the project you said Cleveland and Beach there? Or I'm sorry, Union and, and Beach?
Union and Ellen is, is the station.
Is that where the pipes are coming up and going across?
Yeah.
I need some pipe.
Yeah, that's why we, we did a road closure, that's going to be picked up tomorrow and Friday. So we met our target date. I was hoping we would be done before the holiday weekend, which we will, which means we're going to get everything off the ground, remove the road closures and get everyone back to service because we have three road closures right now because of the bypass pump, yeah.
Gotcha, cool. Great job.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yep, you got it.
Appreciate it. Okay, next, we have Real Term Energy here to give us, Jerry Kaminsky asked them to come in to give us another LED streetlight presentation.
Okay, well, good afternoon or good evening, wherever we are. My name's Kerry Wilson, I'm the founding partner and managing partner of Real Term Energy. This is Steve Harriman, our senior director of business development, and Tom Ranallo from Troy and Banks, who I think some of you know, auditing firm who's done work for the town before.
Are you speaking into that microphone?
Am I speaking into it? I don't know. People always tell me I speak softly.
Okay, yeah, because we have to make sure the viewers can hear you.
Can I do the volume better on the side?
No, is it, is the green light on?
Yeah, it's on.
Okay.
All right, so.
Just, you might have to speak into it a little closer, that's all.
All right, so I'll use my best radio voice. Pardon me? So you have our presentation up? Kim, can you put it up? So Steve is going to pass out to each of the council members a paper copy of the proposal that we are suggesting the town consider. Tom has a very bad hip that needs to be replaced soon, not soon enough.
Two and a half months COVID.
So if you don't mind, I'll have Tom sit down.
Yes, okay.
Well, no, I like to stand.
Oh, okay.
It's all standing in the back.
Tom's going to stand, okay, that's fine. So we're passing this out. Some of you, this is the first time you've seen it. This is not the first time you've talked about streetlights. This is the first presentation I've made to a council in about almost three years. It's a pleasure to be back doing this again. It's the most fun I have. Partly because everybody else comes up to you and asks for money. We're going to come up to you and tell you how you can get it, how you can save the money. This is always the, the energy savings will pay for the project, kind of a, a project. So we're going to talk about what your current situation is right now. You have to acquire your streetlights. We'll talk about how we can do luminaire procurement for you. You have two options and four scenarios, which I'll explain, and then the financial impact to the town. And then we'll summarize and have some recommendations, okay? So next slide, please. So your current situation, there we go. So we've, we've received information from the town based on the information that we've got about what your inventory looks like and what your current expenditure is. And this is what we come up with. You basically have two utilities, National Grid and NICEG. It's divided with Cooperheads about 71%, Decorative's 29%, and National Grid has about 28% of the fixtures, and NICEG has about 76%, 72%, pardon me. But your annual cost is a little over 2.3 million dollars. That's what you're spending on streetlights this current year. Now, that might change a little bit depending upon how the buildings are changing, but that's the information we had from Steve, March? March, March or April? That's, that's the information that we had. So next slide, please. So by properly designing LED streetlights, the efficiency comes from much, much lower energy consumption. But if you acquire your lights, which you have to do from the utility, right, if you don't let the utility do it, you have to acquire them, the savings you make on the maintenance is substantial. We believe that we've done this many times in New York and throughout the US and Canada, that we can save almost up to 80% of what your current expenses are. You're paying 2.34 million dollars now. We think giver, once we've finalized the numbers, you're going to be able to save about 78, 79% down to about 471,000. So currently, you're spending 2.3. Once the project is finished, you'd be spending something like 470. A substantial energy and maintenance savings. But you have to buy the town, you have to buy the lights first. So, next slide, please. So how do you pick what the acquisition cost is going to be? Well, the utility will tell you once you apply to acquire the lights. There's a process, both utilities have them. They have, they will respond to you back within 90 days as to what the price to acquire the streetlights is going to be. Now, that price is hard to pin down. So we've looked at three different methods as trying to establish what the price might be, and they differ. If we've looked at every streetlight acquisition since the New York buyback program began in 2015, the average cost is 670 dollars. If you look at the seven most recently approved ones in New York State, it's 663 dollars. We, as a company, Real Term Energy, has done 10 projects in the last two and a half, three years, and the average cost is 274. We didn't negotiate those prices. I'm not saying that we were able to do it for substantially less than what the other ones were. That's just what the, what the, the audit results produced, and that's what the average was. So we don't want to rely on any one of these, so I thought, let's pick a range. It's going to be somewhere between 350 and 700. Don't know exactly what it's going to be, could be the low end of the range, high end of the range. So we've run some scenarios for you depending upon what that utility buyback number is going to be, okay? Next slide, please. Before I do that, I wanted to put a slide in here about LED procurement. We, when we look at, at real estate, oh, no, sorry, streetlight models, we don't have a horse in the race, we don't, we're not aligned with any one manufacturer. Our whole process is to, once the audit is performed, we will design, sample design, do design or renditions for each of the five or six major streetlight providers, and then they get scored. You can score them for photometrics, how efficient they are, you can score them for how energy efficient they are. And probably the photometrics, how well the lighting lights the road. The second one is the energy efficiency, and then the cost. Those are all objective scores. Once we do that for all four or five major manufacturers, we'll come to you and say, which is the most important? Is it cost? Is it photometry, the light on the road? Or is it the long-term energy efficiency? And you'll assign the coefficient for that, and that will determine what the fixture is going to be. We don't want to choose it. So the nature of your own streets will select what that's going to be. So I just wanted to mention that one aspect of it. So if I can have the next slide, please. So two options and four scenarios. You can either use conventional photocells, which is what you have on now, dusted on, they're light sensitive, or make an addition of smart controls. Has everybody here been sort of brought up speed more or less on smart controls and what they do? Two-way communication between a central management system and the lights themselves that give you advanced notice of faults, not all faults, but some faults, and more maintenance, et cetera, et cetera. It's also the backbone of a smart city. So those are the two routes you can go on whichever fixture is chosen. So we try to do this, so there's four scenarios. The scenario one is if you opt for photocells, and at the low end of the range, which is the 350. Scenario two is you offer smart controls at the low end of the range. Scenario three, the higher end of the range, 700, and scenario four with, with photocells. And scenario, or three, and then four is the one with the smart controls in the high end of the range. I know it's going to look confusing. It's not going to get any less confusing if I promise you at the first glance, but I'll try. Next slide, please. So we've made an estimate of what, we've done 350 projects across North America. We've got a very good idea of what the insulation costs, the fixture costs are. We have an extremely, you know, good handle on that. We put together reasonable provisions as to what the costs will be. None of us like to be in front of a council and says we need more money. So we try and put in very responsible, because nobody in that room is having a good time. We try and put in very responsible provisions to come up with what these cost estimates are. There's subjects of variation depending on what the actual inventory gets up, or gets, tunes up. But we estimate that in the first scenario, it's a lower acquisition estimate, going with photocells, you'd be looking at a net project cost of 5.6 million dollars, including the acquisition of 2.4, an incentive of 477,000, and the actual cost of the lights with photocells of 3.6. So your net number would be 5.6 million. Next slide, please. By adding smart controls, you're basically adding about 900,000. So the cost of, yes, the acquisitions the same, roughly two and a half, but the project cost goes up to 6.5. And a payback of 3.4 years. The next slide, please. So then this scenario is number three, which is photocells, but the higher acquisition price. So we're looking at a project cost of about 8.0 million, 8.1 million, with an acquisition of 4.9. And next slide, please, just about 9 million by putting in the, the smart controls. So that's the range of what the potential costs are going to be. I apologize for showing a lot of numbers at you if you haven't actually had a chance to read this proposal, but it's all in there. So let's look at the next slide. So if we look at the financial information, what we propose that you do, and we've done this many times, we structured dozens of these, is what's called a tax exempt lease purchase. Is that term familiar to everybody here? Yes? Okay, so it's, it's a very well-honed way of financing streetlights. It's up in use in all 50 states. The basic premise is that the lender doesn't pay tax on the, on the federal tax on the interest payment, so it's a much lower cost to the borrower. It's basically, it's a loan structured as a municipal lease. The lease payments are made annually, interest in arrears. The term is variable depending upon the user requirements. It's annually appropriated, so you have to approve it every year to the actual lease payment, which is why it doesn't show up on your balance sheet. It's only as a note to the financial statements of the coming year's indebtedness. If properly structured, it can result in a, in a positive cash flow. What that means is, depending upon the term and how we structure the, the transaction, this would require no money from the town whatsoever, and the energy and maintenance savings would pay for the whole project. And you can make substantial annual cash flow gains by structuring it this way. We actually factored in the cost of the maintenance, which you don't have currently because you're paying one bill in the tariff for maintenance and electricity. And I said, we've done this many times. So that's the bottom line of how that we propose that this gets structured. Any questions on this so far? Should I just keep rolling?
How much of the lighting is sourced in the US?
How much is, that's a very good question. Most of the manufacturers that we would deal with, let me take that back. All of the manufacturers that we deal with are American companies. There's five or six main ones. There's one Canadian one, LED roadway lighting, but all of the others, Acuity, Cooper, you know, the lot. They're all American companies. However, almost all electronic components come from the Far East anyway. Almost all aluminum casting is done in the Far East. It's mainly assembly. But it would be certainly qualified as American. We're not, we're not believers at all in cheap Asian product. We've never done it. We've done 350 projects and 350,000 lights and never used them. These things are supposed to last for 20 years. Let's let them do that, rather than, and we have seen ones that are used in India and Brazil and other places where they, they've gone on the cheap ones and they're breaking down after four or five years. So if your question is, are they robust and are they American-made, the answer is yes, with those qualifiers, that no electronics are made in America. True, with a 20-year expected life. Okay, and our idea about doing, I should, I should have mentioned this before. How we get that energy efficiency is by doing extremely arduous designs. We take every unique street and do a proper design for that, rather than a blanket. What the utilities tend to do is they use like a one-size-fits-all approach. You have the opportunity, put just the right amount of light on just the right roadway type. Why not take that opportunity now, it costs an extra three or four dollars a light to do that, and make sure that you actually have guaranteed the most efficient light that's going to be up there for 20 years. So that's our proposal. That's how we do what we do. So let's have the next slide. So we look at that first capital cost, but this is the first scenario where, you know, low range on the acquisition of photocells. The cost is about 5.6 million dollars. This can be done in a five-year term. The thing about interest rates, these were the interest rates that were prevailing 10 days ago, when this was, was put together. I haven't repriced it again, but I'm sure it's up, and it's not going down. They're going up and up. It doesn't follow interest rates the same way. It doesn't follow the Fed, it follows the bond yield curves. And those vary going up and down, but generally up. The longer you wait, the more expensive it's going to be to finance. This is at least 150 basis points higher than it was a year ago. So in this environment, it does pay to, to lock in the lowest cost of financing now. So in all three scenarios, whether it's a five-year, eight-year, or 10-year amortization, it's cash flow positive from, from the gateway. Next slide, please. I don't propose to walk you through all of this, but I'm going to just point to a couple of them.
In a five-year scenario, this is what you pick up as cash flow.
Can you, you know what, they won't be able to hear you on the YouTube, we are live streaming.
I'll have to point.
You will.
All right, in that bottom, this is terrible. Steve, why don't you point for me? Thank you. We don't count any savings in the first year, because it takes a year to do the project. The, the funds come in at the beginning of the year, of, of a calendar year, and it, you don't pay the interest until the 12th month, and we do all the work in the meantime, the project cost and everything. But you won't get any savings that month, so we don't count any savings in that first month, or that first year, rather. So the savings accumulate in the five-year scenario, so it's 360 in the first year, year two, then 418, 479, 540, for a total cumulative savings for the five-year, maybe of a million eight. So by having it completely funded by the energy maintenance savings, you would pick up almost 2 million dollars over the first five years. And then all the savings go to you because the lease payment's done. Financing it longer gives you an opportunity to make more money back, but you're also borrowing for longer periods of time. So I'm not going to go through the second one, that one. If I can have the next slide, please. Okay, this is where you add the smart controls. So the last column there, it's still cash flow positive in each of the five, eight, and 10-year scenarios. Next slide, please. This, again, I apologize for the size. It shows a cumulative savings in five years of 7.3, or 734, almost 7 million in the eight-year scenario, and 15 million in the 10-year scenario. Eminently financeable. This gives lots of room for interest, interest rate increases for when the actual project gets funded. The thing about structured finance, it's quite elastic. If you don't know how to structure the first couple of years, you can always make it so that it's cash flow positive over the balance. It's just a matter of term, okay? Next slide, please. Let's skip through this. So this one here is the high end of the, of the acquisition. It won't be financeable over five years. You'd have to actually bump it out to eight to make it positive. It is financeable, but it's something that's going to cost the city. We don't want to see that. So it's an eight- or 10-year scenario. Next slide. Actually, skip two if you will, please, Kim. That one. Nope, one back. So this one here, we also have, this is the full-on, the highest acquisition cost, and adding the smart control, again, in five years, it's not, it can't be done with a positive cash flow, but it can be done over the eight- and 10-year scenarios. So if I can have the next one, please. So, once all these project costs are determined, we want to select the shortest term possible to make it cash flow positive. Again, not requiring any civic funds at all. We don't need, you don't have to put any money into this. It'll be driven solely by the energy and the maintenance savings. Maintenance savings because the utility is charging you an arm and a leg hidden in the tariff, and once you buy them back, if they were to convert it themselves, they keep the, the maintenance costs more or less the same, but these things have a 1% failure rate where the other ones have a 20% failure rate. So meaning every five years, you've got to relamp them. These things, you don't. So it's like 1%, but they'll charge you essentially the same maintenance. And we've seen this in dozens and dozens of utilities. That's the game. That's why they don't want to sell their streetlights. And that's why they prefer to do it. Most municipalities in North America are trying to buy their streetlights back from their utilities, because the money's in the maintenance, and the utilities know it, and that the savings that I'm presenting to you are, are well-known. So we want to minimize the borrowing costs. We don't want to have you to have the term any longer than you need to, as long as it remains cash flow positive. So in these recommendations, if it was options one or two, it could be done on the five-year term. And options three or four, be done on an eight-year term, again, cash flow positive the whole way. Next slide, please. So I want to summarize, because I can see people getting glossy when it happens. Interest rates are rising. Borrowing costs are going to go up. So despite these increasing costs, because of the way we can structure the transaction, the, the, the ability to keep this cash flow positive and have no money from the town upfront, that's easily doable. The interest rate environment is still, it's not favorable, it's becoming less favorable, but there's lots of room to do it here. Electricity rates are also rising. In one of the town in Maine, we just saw that they're getting a 78% increase in their electricity bill, 78%. So if you lock those savings in now, you lock your baseline in now, so you actually get more savings. The numbers get better as the electricity rates go in. We project these numbers based on 3%, because that's conservative. It'll be a lot more. The technology for LEDs and smart control is more or less matured. There's not much more, you can get a little bit more juice out of them, but there's not many more technological leaps. The big leaps happen between two thousand thirteen and two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, in terms of limits per watt. They're marginally better. The smart controls are getting better as well, but that's becoming a maturing industry. So by waiting as long as you have, the last three large projects in New York are you and your neighbors in Buffalo and Niagara Falls. But by waiting this long, you're actually going to benefit from more mature technology. Slightly higher prices because of supply chain issues right now, but you'll actually benefit from that. Inflation and labor rates, I think you heard from earlier that inflation's a factor all over the place, so the sooner you do this, the more protection you have from that. And again, once the benefits are, it's properly designed, properly structured, it won't cost anything to the taxpayer at all. Next slide, please. So that's the why now. So what our recommendation is, is that you immediately apply to both utilities to acquire the lights. You'll get news back in ninety days as to what that number's going to be. What we can do to get this going is we start doing what we call an investment-grade audit. So we'll verify using Troy and Banks, the audit results that the utility will do. The utility will count how many lights they've got of each type, and they'll give you that with their numbers to how much it's going to cost to buy them. They don't take the parameters that we take. We need to know how high is the fixture, what is the pole length or the arm length? Because the light has to be delivered properly. The utility knows how big the pole is, because when the pole falls down, they need to know is it a twenty-foot pole, a forty-foot pole, a sixty-foot pole, or whatever. They never take the fixture height. That's not something they track. That has to be done. It also verifies the results that they do. So that is included in our proposal cost as the actual audit. So then we will look at the process that I showed you before as to how to, you know, get a properly procured fixture and smart control, if you go that option. We design all the LED streetlights properly. Each unique street gets its own design. We'll calculate and assist in obtaining all the proper funding that you would be for incentives, which we estimate now at about four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. And we'll secure competitive bids for the electrical contractor to install new fixtures. So this is something that we take care of. Once that's all done, we'll, basically, we have three or four different TELP lenders that will shop the deal to, to make sure we get the best financing rate for. We actually add no lift at all. We don't have any, we don't make money on the money. Whatever the rate is that you borrow it at, that's the rate. We don't add a premium to that. We're not trying to earn money off making money. We're trying to make sure that the transaction goes ahead. And then we can actually perform the maintenance. You don't have a maintenance department now. We have seventy-five, eighty maintenance contracts that we administer.
We do have our own union, yeah, streetlight maintenance.
Oh, really? The utility doesn't do it?
They do it, but if we were to buy them, we'd have to do them.
Okay.
And actually, we own some of our own, too, so that's why.
I'm sure you do. There's a...
Ours is pretty complicated.
Yeah, and we'll have to dive into that once we get there. I'm trying to keep this as high level as possible.
Right.
Because of the hour and whatever. So that's basically it. If you can go to the next slide? Right. I'm not going to go through this whole spiel. Some of it's in there. We've been doing this since two thousand thirteen, over three hundred and twenty-five, I think, committees we've done. Three hundred and fifty thousand streetlights, seventy-five thousand smart controls. We've learned a lot along the way since two thousand thirteen. I personally stood in front of about seventy-five councils, something like that. We have a pretty good idea what we're doing. We haven't seen everything, but we've seen enough to know how to not make the same mistake twice. And I think we've got a very good handle on how to do this job properly. Let's leave it there and open for questions if you have any.
Yeah, the question about the smart controls technology, you know, we've had previous vendors explain to us how that could work. Can you get into that just a little bit as a reminder for us here and then for the general public?
Sure. First of all, don't read the brochure. Nothing is plug-and-play. It all says, just stick it in, turn it on, and it'll communicate. It doesn't. They're all getting better. The smart control technology is a two-way communication system. There's different ways of doing it. There's a mesh system, and there's a cellular system. Most are going cellular over the mesh. So there's a chip inside each one of them that will tell an operator somewhere here, or if we do it at our end, which streetlights are faulting. If there's been over voltage, under voltage, you can have a tilt alarm, so if it leans more than fifteen percent, you're advised of that. If the power goes off momentarily, if one of the ones we really want to look for is what's called fault when on. So if it's supposed to be on and it's not, you want to know about that. The idea is, rather than waiting for the public to come and tell you, or city crews to, city personnel to advise of a dayburner or a fault somewhere, that you have advance notice of that, and you can dispatch a crew to that before you have to wait until it's actually done. They're not perfect yet. They're getting a lot better. They also can have other communication technologies that use those nodes to work. But we haven't found one that's excellent. They're all getting better. There's been some amalgamation in the industry. I won't recommend names, because that's not my job. We are still agnostic when it comes to smart controls, but...
And the only other thing I had was more a comment than a question. I know we've, looking through the brochure and seeing some of the projects we've taken on are much smaller than what we'd be doing here. There was one that might have been Massachusetts that was kind of comparable to our size, but, you know, to my mind, I'm interested in doing something that's long-term and kind of gets us close to fully solving our problem, which, to my, you know, we have a complicated system like the supervisor said, which, to my mind, it means the town taking on all the streetlights and simplifying it. So having the smart technology and the town owning every single light would streamline and simplify our system, and it can maximize our savings, too. So just something I wanted to share with you before we, you know, talk about moving any further.
No, it's a worthwhile comment. If I understood you, did you not, did I hear you say that we didn't have many lights, any projects that were comparable in size to this one?
Well, I mean, look at some of the projects, like the number of lights that were involved. It looks like, you know, some of the projects, they were in the hundreds.
You're right.
You know, but there was one that was larger.
In New York State, yeah. Our largest is so far forty-five thousand.
Right, and seeing some of the larger ones in your brochure, it gave me confidence you'd be able to handle something like this, so...
Oh, yeah. Yes. And a comment about the smaller jobs. You learn more on a thousand-light job than you will on a thirty-thousand-light job sometimes, because if you probably, if you learn more on thirty thousand, thirty-one thousand-light jobs than you will on one thirty-thousand-light job, if I said that right. Every utility has different standards of maintenance. Look, suffice to say, we've done many jobs over five thousand streetlights, many, up to thirty-five thousand.
Well, let me, I'm going to have to interrupt you because we're running out of time, but our next step is to put an RFP out, so we'll send you that information.
We will always play, that's fine. If that's what you have to do. And all the ones that we've done in New York with Save One, we didn't do an RFP. We went through a consulting contract, and then we procure on your behalf all the materials and the labor. So here's what happens. With an RFP, and you can, if that's what you're going to do, that's what you're going to do. But there is another mechanism to do a consulting contract, and then we can handle that. I haven't had anywhere like the time to show you how we actually do that. But if you run an RFP, it's going to cost you something like six months to write it, evaluate it.
We have it ready. Like, Pat, I talked to Paul Poirvsky, right?
Yeah, we're close to the...
And we should have it for the next meeting.
Either next meeting or last meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
Please, because it's been too long. Yeah, so we're going to get that going, and then we'll send it to you.
If that's your decision, we'll abide by that. I'm just saying, there is another way.
I know, I know, but I think that we've heard so many different presentations, so we need to put together what we want and then choose from that.
Understood.
Pardon me, have you contacted the National Bureau of Forensic Auditors by that grant issue cost?
We've been in discussions with them, yes. Yeah, they know that's...
Okay, good.
Yeah, we're good.
Any other questions?
Appreciate it.
Thank you so much for your time.
You're welcome. Thank you for coming out.
I'm sorry to throw a lot of numbers at you.
Supervisor, distinct report number?
Oh, sure, yes.
So they asked me to get, so my firm, Troy and Banks, has been a long time forensic auditor for the town for over ten years. And we've conducted street by street, streetlight audits. We've recovered overcharges. Like what you're saying, I know what you own, what you don't own. That's what we do. So that's why these guys asked me to come here tonight.
Oh, okay.
And I'm also a GIS mapping expert that has to be done when you do this, so that it's not too, you don't have residents saying it's too much light and complaining. So that's where my role is. I'm, I've been with you guys for over ten years. Mr. Kraus will attest to that, and I know your street lighting system better than anybody. I have your maps. I know exactly where your streets are.
We're going to have, but you know what, we still have some business to do before seven o'clock. All right, well, I appreciate that.
Thank you for your time.
Yes.
Appreciate it.
Thanks. Okay. We still have to do the town board resolution items. Sorry, I had to cut them short, but we have heard many of these LED, you know, streetlight presentations. I think we know. And Pat's working on it with Paul Poirvsky, so we should have something together in the next couple of meetings. So we have the resolution items tonight. Resolution one is the transfer of funds, and Brian Kraus, do you want to just explain why there's so many? Just the end of it.
I mean, that's what happens is we get to the end of the audit, it's a transfer that needs to happen at this. So that's the final transfer.
For twenty twenty-one. So those are, if you notice, that's the resolution's title, twenty twenty-one. And then we have the warrant. Comments, questions on that? Then number three is the purchase of upgraded video security storage. Lisa Valanese is here, if anybody has any questions on that. Four is just the revision of that last resolution we did with the Gordian Group. We just had to correct the right name on it. Five is the amendment to agreement with the University District Community Development Association on eighty-nine Garden Vale Drive. Rachel's here tonight.
On this resolution and the next one, I need to take myself off as a sponsor. I agree with the resolutions and the work being done, but on my full-time job, I do do work with the University Heights, Gloria J. Parks. We partner with programs in the human service area with youth and senior programming, nothing in housing, but I'm going to abstain just for that reason.
Anybody want to put their name on? Councilmember Adam Zach. I'm both of those, then. Thank you.
Anybody want to put their name on?
Councilmember Adam Zach. I'm both of those, then. Thank you.
And on that, we should have a poll from the consent agenda, right?
That is correct.
Okay, so that's twenty twenty-two dash three seventy-one and twenty twenty-two dash three seventy-two, but when I make the announcement, if you could jump in or something.
I will, thank you.
Seven is the accept the site plan for twenty-two-ten Old Union Road, Ruschniak's Collision, Phase Two. Then we have the award of the summer camp busing to Fisher Bus Service. And then we have noticed bidders for the surplus vehicles that we talked about at the last board meeting, and I'm working with Lieutenant Roll and Tom Carney at the Central Garage, and I think we're ready to go with this. Ten is the call for public hearing for amendments to the vehicle and traffic ordinance. This probably took place at the traffic safety meeting. Eleven is call for public hearing for the rezoning of one hundred McKesson Parkway from C Retail to District to RA Apartment. Is there anybody here from building and zoning? And twelve is also the call for public hearing on twenty-three forty-five Williams Street from our residential to C Business. Councilmember Noah, did you know anything about these two things?
Well, resolutions twelve and thirteen are dealing with a proposed credit union, and that's why the accessory drive-through window is involved in resolution number thirteen.
Okay. Thirteen. And then fourteen is a call for public hearing on the special use permit for the Verizon wireless telecommunications facility. And fifteen is the adopt the policy concerning town board committee assignments.
Yeah, so on fifteen...
Well, wait a minute. Councilmember Jazinski is the mover, and I am, so I don't know if you wanted to say anything first, Councilmember Jazinski?
Yeah, this is an attempt to, you know, get this board to come, you know, and make things inclusive instead of exclusive when we have meetings, because there's other board members that are making decisions in other committees without including board members on that committee. So what this is, this is an attempt to show the people of Chiquitoca that this board is willing to work together as a unit instead of working on other committees that they are not a co-chair of. But it clearly states in the resolution that as a whole, the board votes regardless. All this is, is to show the constituents of the town of Chiquitoca that this body of government is willing to work together on resolutions.
And so why not just have a...
Could I just add something? So anyway, my comment on this is, as you can see, the resolve says to increase efficiency and communication. Because what's happening, I think it's putting our department head sometimes in a bad spot, where there's been a few instances where I've been the co-chair for many years on a certain committee, and then a new council member comes in, and they start working with the department head, and it's double the work. So they didn't know, the council member didn't know that we already did all that research, and they're asking the department head for all the same information that we already worked on. So it's trying to increase efficiency and without duplicating work that's already been done. That's how that, why we have these committee chairs and these co-chairs, and why, and I'm not stopping anybody from working on what they want to work on, but all we're asking is that you let the co-chairs know that, and they might be able to help you and say, well, wait a minute here, we already have this information. So that's what the purpose, I believe, of this resolution is. So, Councilmember Pilarvsky?
Yes.
Go ahead, Brian.
So with this resolution, I mean, how do you improve communication by limiting communication? That's my first question.
I just, I explained that we're improving the efficiency and communication by, if the other, the non-co-chair wants to work on something, just let the co-chairs know, and it helps the communication, because, like I said, I had the information already.
So just saying that, I don't think there needs to be a resolution to handcuff any council member to limiting themselves access to department heads. I, I mean, I know from experience that when a chair from one department said, this department needs a part-time employee, but come to find out that department head didn't need a part-time employee, they needed something different. So sometimes information is filtered coming to us as a whole board to meet the agenda or the narrative of such committee chair or co-chair. I'm worried about it that, I mean, to tell you the truth, I have a lack of trust in it. I don't think it's going to benefit the taxpayers, the departments, or this town board. Especially, I mean, you want to talk about communicating with the rest of the board about committees and stuff. I mean, most of these committees are chaired and co-chaired by two board members, and we don't get committee reports. Not that I give committee reports on veterans or the schools or anything, haven't done that, but I don't see this working favorably for operations of this board. I see it backfiring for us. I mean, I've had, you know, we all got the email from Gary Borick sharing his opinion on it. He can't come to tonight's meeting, but, you know, his objection towards it and reasons why, and I share those same beliefs in it. I just, I don't think it's going to be productive. And then a question also is, let's say this resolution passes tonight, and what are the consequences if a board member decides to go talk to another department head? Do they lose their council seat? Do they get a hand slap? Do they, what comes of it?
I don't think there should be any consequences.
Besides just, so I, I, I get the reasoning for it to say, hey, have a courtesy, let the chair and co-chair know that you're going to go talk to a department head. I agree with that a hundred percent. I think putting a resolution through like this, it's just, I don't, I don't trust it, and that's just my opinion.
Where the limitation is, is excluding the council chair and co-chair out of this. So this is a clear indication, and no vote saying that we're not willing to include any committee member within that committee in the conversation of making decisions within that committee.
It's not. Don't put a spin on it if somebody votes no on this, that they're not willing to work with... It's not. Don't put a spin on it if somebody votes no on this, that they're not willing to work with such committee persons or a certain person or anything like that. I mean, I, I'm not in favor of this because I don't trust it.
It clearly states in the resolution that as a body, the board votes as a whole. But where we lack, as you said, transparency is that, and it's happened before. I can, I can make several examples, you know, for the assessments. Did you and I have one phone call on the assessments? How many phone calls have I made out to you, Brian, and you didn't return my call or text me, said you're too busy?
We have absolutely talked about assessments.
But you found time to, you know, get with Jerry and say, hey, you know what, let's, let's vote out Charlie Markell. When that highway, you know, is that your committee?
Whoa, 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 let's leave the personal names out of this.
First of all, I wasn't on that. That, that wasn't my resolution or anything. The moment I got an email from someone outside of my committees, being Charlie, I included you, who, he didn't include his chairs. All right, so let's back that one up right there. Second of all, you want to go with assessments. I mean, you and the supervisor put a resolution through to stop the assessments, but she's not a chair on that. It's you and I. So why, why did you not bring that up to me?
I can't speak on the supervisor's behalf, but you and I sit on that chair. And would it be, would it be fair to say that I've made literally 10, 15 phone calls? And you didn't return my call or text to me, said you're too busy to return my call? I mean, and then we got a whole building full of people that are hot and heavy, wanted some answers. And, and it's pretty sad when, you know, two chair committees, you know, who sit on the same chair can't have a, a conversation regarding our committee. But, uh, you know, there's been instances where, you know, there's been people outside of committees that have made, you know, decisions within that committee. So where it lacks transparency, as a whole, they're saying that we don't care if you're a committee member or not. We're going to make a decision within it and we're going to exclude you.
It's, it's not. Decisions cannot be made by a single board member. It needs a majority. So anything that is decided upon is the whole board. And you don't need a resolution to say that. That's just the, the law, the rules. You need a majority. Second of all, you want to talk about communication. Yes, this board does have a communication problem. Doing a resolution like this will not fix that problem. It only makes it worse. And also, talk about communication. The first time I got a call or a text from you within the past 30 days was when you put this resolution through and you found out that I wasn't supporting it. So it's a two-way street on it. Yes, I'm very hard to get a hold of.
I rarely share my cellphone with anybody that's willing to look at it and I'll prove your point wrong. But I have, I've been a board member for six months and I would say, I would say it would be fair that I have minimally 50 to 75 phone calls to the entire board. And I would say out of those 50 to 75 phone calls I had out, I would, I think it would be fair to say that I probably had five maybe returned phone calls out of my 75 attempts.
Are you saying from the whole board? Your returned phone calls, Mr. Jazinski?
I'm saying there has been periods of times where I have reached out to certain board members that I have not either received a phone call back and I have made several phone calls in that. And I have yet to receive a phone call.
Every time you and I have shared a phone call, it's been back and forth. I've never left you hanging on a phone call.
Chris, I've asked you about that opioid addiction thing. Where are we with that? Where, where did the phone, where did the conversation go awry?
But in all fairness, you started that conversation and took the lead on it. So when did you set up a meeting or anything to go further with that?
I have had several conversations. You, you can quote me for it. You can check it. I've asked, I said, we can have a separate meeting to form that committee because in my opinion that, you know, opioids and mental health is one of the biggest issues that are ailing society today. How many times have I, I called you, Chris? How many times have I called you, Brian? How many times have I called you, Jerry?
So Jerry, nobody's been-
Wait a minute, council member. We have had one phone call about the opiates. And then the chief got us together in a room with the county and we talked about the opiates. And what they were doing and how far they have come with it. We've, I've never heard another phone call from you saying, hey, are we all getting back together again about this?
How many phone calls do I have to make, Chris? I've made, I, I would bet I've made at least 10 phone calls in regards to that as well.
Councilmember, I was not the only one in that room. I did not set that meeting up. The chief made that, the chief did that meeting.
That's a separate scenario. I'm talking, have I not had conversations with you and asked you what your opinion is and asked you to be a part of that?
Exactly. You want to do the committee. I said, let me know. Tell me when there's a meeting. I'll be more than happy to join the meeting with you. You never set a date up. You never got anybody together for a meeting.
So for the sake of time, we all agree there's a communication problem. We, there's no denying that. We all agree on that. There's definitely a communication problem. This resolution is something different, though. This resolution is the, the flaws of the committee assignment setup and how it's going to limit information coming to board members. That's the problem with this resolution. All right? Committee assignments are put forward by the supervisor. Um, one year when I first started here, I had many committees, you know. I, I was liked that year. This year I have some paper committees that don't even exist. Um, so the committee assignment process is flawed, all right? And then when two board members have 90% of the committees and want to put a resolution through saying that they're limiting access to other board members to go talk to department heads, I find a problem with that, especially when I have to make decisions, especially when I have to make decisions for the town.
As Christine has, you guys have mentioned that you're bitter about because you, you weren't included in these new, uh, committees. And you've clearly stated that you're bitter about it. I, I apologize. I had no control over the committee assignments. I had no input on the committee assignments.
Oh, I'm not bitter. I just don't have trust for others.
I can, I can, I can see, I can see that, Brian. And, you know, it just, it clearly states the town, the town board committees may conduct formal or informal meetings. However, they cannot make decisions for the town board. If that isn't as transparent as black and white, you guys are being fooled.
But give me one example where a board member made a decision on behalf of the whole town board that, their, their resolution that they put through. You need two people on a resolution, then you need the majority to vote it through. So no decisions are being made by one single individual board member.
But there's been discussions without the co-chairs, is what I'm saying.
Supervisor.
You know, they're surprised about it. And that's, that's the only thing that I think this was trying to open up communication with, include the co-chairs. They work directly with the department head.
I don't disagree. Give a courtesy call, say, hey, I'm meeting with so-and-so on, on this idea I have or whatever.
Pretty much, I think, was the intention here, but we got to move on.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I, I've got one more question on this because I'd like to know specifically. I think it's the seventh, whereas certain meetings related to these committee assignments have been held outside the presence and knowledge of the designated co-chairs. Uh, what's specifically, give me one meeting that we're talking about.
Well, he brought up the highway super, the deputy that, um, there were obviously some type of meetings trying to eliminate that position.
In fact, the only time you initiated, right, Diane's right. The only time, Jerry, you've ever initiated a phone call first is to oust Charlie Markell.
Well, you, you can take that any way you want. That, that was monetary as far, as far as I was concerned. Uh, which is a whole different story and I'm a firm believer in keeping personnel out of it. And I'll be the first one to admit, we have had some meetings from time to time where somebody wasn't included. Atturning client privileges is one of them. And, um, yeah, I hate to bring this up, but when somebody's suing the town, you can't have them sit with us on our side so they can listen, listen to our strategy. It doesn't make any sense. No, and it's like I said, for all the years that I, I've been here, never been a problem, problem before. I just don't understand why it's a problem now.
We have two minutes until the regular meeting.
I know. We haven't finished the resolution items.
I understand. Uh, I think there's an attempt here to fix a problem with communication. I think we're looking at the wrong side of it, though. Because when you look at, you just pack, pick a random board meeting and you figure out how frequently individuals are sponsors of resolutions. And for the public that's watching, 96, 97, 98% of the time, the names appear on the resolutions because of the chairs, co-chairs of committees. It's just standard operating procedure. You look at the frequency in which the names appear on the resolutions, the supervisor shows up the most often and the supervisor should because you're here full-time every single day. It makes sense. The next most frequent member is Councilmember Jazinski. The May 10th meeting, his name's on 18 resolutions. Mr. Polarski's on two. Mr. Kaminsky is on one. And you go to the February 8th meeting.
Mr. Jazinski is on there because Linda Hammer's not here tonight, so he's got the IT.
That was, that was the May 10th meeting.
Oh, May 10th, okay.
Yeah, I, I mean, and this is another issue we have with communication is folks talk and they get interrupted and they get spoken over. And if we had a tally of that, Mr. Jazinski would take first place, too. But you go to February 8th and the supervisor's the most common, as you'd expect. Mr. Jazinski shows up 15 times. Uh, Ms. Adamsak once, Mr. Kaminsky zero times. And we should look at the communication piece from the outflow of information instead of the inflow. Because the concern I have with this is this, we have a legislative body. We're all, we're all equals. We're all public officers. And you have a public officer's law. We're supposed to act independently. And our board procedures need to be such that we protect the power of the minority on a board of an individual board member and their ability to act independently. That's why we have elections, right? We should be working on the other side of the coin about maybe board members doing monthly reports on some of the things going on in their committees. And I'll give you an example. What's going on at chiefs and commissioners meetings? I attend monthly. Maybe I can prepare monthly reports that are written and send that out to everybody. One of the things that I do with social media is I put up the occasional post of some of the things that I'm working on in the course of the week and I get that out there. So it's not something that is new to me. I'd be able to add that to my schedule personally. But if we, as council members, start by leading by example and putting what we know out to everybody else, that's going to be an affirmative, positive way to do it. It's going to help build trust and then the communication will flow from there. What this happens is it centralizes the power on one individual. It's punitive in nature. And when you look at the frequency of people that are sponsoring resolutions, all it does is take even more power or ability to get an access to information away from certain board members that are showing up on next to nothing and giving that information and that power to even more people. And we should be, all be working with the same information, but we should do that in a positive sense. We're leading by example, trying to do the right thing here. I think we're going about the wrong way to solve a real problem because communication is a problem in every organization. This isn't the way to do it. This is, in a sense, this feels like punishment. And, and let's say we follow this policy for another five, six years. There could be a time in the future where a town board has to rein in a supervisor that isn't doing the right thing. And they can weaponize this policy against a town board member or town board members that are trying to do right by the public, you know? Councilmember Jazinski and I agree on things. So do you and I, Chris. I mean, I think you guys should have the power to do independent investigation to answer the questions that come before you. You shouldn't have to always run that by me, even if it involves my committee.
We are over seven o'clock.
I understand.
I'd like to make a recommendation.
If I can make a final comment, we have a gentleman who's making comments about a governing body that has a problem with putting its hand in pledging allegiance to the flag of our country. He's making decisions.
I'm, I'm just going to have to take control for a minute because we're on the work session YouTube.
But you want us to work together.
So anyway, we're on the YouTube for the work session. There's people waiting for us on the, on the regular meeting. So we're going to have to end this, um, YouTube, um, Madam Clerk and get into the seven o'clock meeting and finish up the work session portion, I think, right? Because people are waiting for the... At the seven o'clock meeting. Yes. So that'll only-
Have we all looked through the resolutions? Do we have any issues with them? Have we all looked through them?
Yeah, there are a, a few issues. Yeah.
On the, on the rest of the resolutions?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
So what do you suggest, Madam Clerk?
I suggest you finish the work session. Finish it, at least go through the resolutions. If we're a few minutes late, they're already on the YouTube link. They already know that we're, that we're continuing on.
Okay, um, I'm, I'm sorry, Councilmember Jazinski, go ahead.
Well, was Noak done? Because you cut him off, so.
No, well, yeah, okay.
Um, I mean, if I'm going to, if I'm going to get personally insulted and my religious freedom is going to be attacked up here, I have a hard time understanding how this is positive and intent. I gave you the benefit of the doubt to say, you're, sir. Sir, you're speak-
Councilmember, wait a minute. Councilmember Jazinski, let Noak-
Sir, you're speaking over me.
Councilmember Noak, finish and then I'll give you the floor.
I've been on the board four and a half years and I've had to start from scratch to build relationships with each of these folks. Jerry and I didn't know each other before this. We get along pretty well, you'd say, right? We can talk about anything. We can work through any problem. And that's possible with all of us. That's not possible when you want to force your religious ideals on other people. We have differences of opinion on policy before the board. That's our job up here. Our job up here is not to personally attack folks. There is a positive intent behind this, even if it's, even if there's some political stuff going on with it, with you. I think there really is a positive intent. I'd like to help solve that. I don't think this language is the answer. I think we could do another version of this that goes on the positive side of that. I'd be happy to work with that, you on that, if you'd let me. But if you feel that my life offends you to a point where you can't do such, let me know. Because we've been up here for over six months. And I haven't interrupted you while you spoke, but you've done that to me. I haven't personally insulted you, but you've done that to me. And hopefully, we can get to a place in the rest of this year where we can get a better working relationship. You called me, I returned your calls and I tell you, you got me in the busiest week of my work year. I'll get back to you as soon as I can. We played a little bit of phone tag today. We did have an opportunity to speak before the meeting. I think all of us are making the best intent we can to work together. But it doesn't help when you personally insult people while you're sitting up here.
Councilmember Jazinski, you have the floor.
What you're seeing is a classic case, one-on-one of distraction. I never once made mention of Councilmember Noak's religion. I'm talking about our country and the flag that we all stand in front of. Um, he represents the people who have defunded the police. He supported India Walton. He's a, he's a known socialist. He doesn't want law enforcement. He wants to-
Excuse me, excuse me. I do not think this is the time or the place for that.
Let, let him have the floor, please. We let-
Point of order.
See, he's doing exactly-
How is this relevant to the resolution? This is campaigning.
Double standard, talking over me, blaming, blaming, blaming. He wants to work because he wants to change the narrative and distract from exactly what this resolution says, folks. It's black and white.
Sir!
He's talking over me.
Councilmember Noak, you had your turn, so.
So all I said is I never talked about his religion. I talked about our country. And, and people have brought it to my attention that he is disrespectful. He doesn't put his hand over his heart. He doesn't worship the flag. That we, we, you know, without this freedom, he wouldn't be able to have this freedom of speech. So it's that exact flag that gives him this freedom of speech, which is being abused right in front of you today, folks.
Can we get back to the resolution now?
As, as a, as a veteran who fought for that flag in this country, you talk about communication. If you took two seconds to ask Councilmember Noak on why he doesn't put his heart, hand over his heart, you'd find out that he's a Quaker and therefore you would find out it's his religious beliefs and therefore you would respect it a little more. So it goes back to communication right there, just simply asking why.
Has he disclosed that to anybody? Does anybody on this Zoom meeting, anybody know about, that's not the point. The point, I could, it's, his religious freedoms is his religious rights. I'm not making an issue over his religion. I'm making, I'm saying what he's doing is a classic case of distraction.
I think we got to move on, because there's some other information. We got to move on, okay? I'm going to have to take control of the meeting. Let's move on to the rest of the resolution so we can get to the regular board meeting. Um, 16 is the purchase of upgraded video security storage. Any questions? Uh, the clerk and IPS software maintenance is number 17. This is all IT-related. Annual RPS license renewal. 19 is the con, uh, conduct full network vulnerability scan.
Uh, we are amending that resolution.
Okay.
Second resolved. We are adding to the end. It says that this town board hereby authorizes Global Security IQ to provide a full network vulnerability scan for a cost not to exceed $7,176.
What was the amount?
$7,176.
Okay. Any questions on that? Anything further? Uh, number 20 is annual access control system service agreement. 21 is the annual maintenance for multi-function units. 22 is the designation of the town, Toward Just Toward, Inc., that the chief of police had chosen. Thank you. Getting that, I'll take into care finally. I know. Good, thank you. Any questions on that? 23 is amend classification of appointment of the Mark, uh, Park Maintenance Worker One. Um, 24 is the authorize the baseball, softball organizations. 25 is the memorandum of understanding with the Stingray Swim Club. Uh, 26 is the aid to youth organizations. 27 is the hiring and, uh, part-time seasonal employees. Hiring termination for part-time. And, and this is where it gets sticky is, um, the next few resolutions. 28 and 29 are somewhat similar. I don't know, and I had asked Jill not to put these in yet because we have to discuss this as a board. You know, this is an example of not commun- I don't know, and I had asked Jill not to put these in yet because we have to discuss this as a board. You know, this is an example of not communicating. I mean, I don't know why you're, these, this resolution twenty-eight is in before twenty-nine, which I told her not to put in and she's not here tonight. Um, so we can't even discuss this with her. So I, my recommendation is these to be pulled because there's too much information here that we need to discuss before we can even take a vote on this. But they're two similar resolutions, somewhat anyway, except for a few different salaries.
I believe the salaries is the big difference. Uh, I know that without taking any action on the four items here tonight, uh, we're not gonna have the staff we need to even open up the town park pool. That we, in or, in order to get enough lifeguards to operate the pools, we're going to need to pass either resolution twenty-eight or twenty-nine. And even if we do twenty-nine, uh, there are some names there that would need to go up to fifteen dollars an hour because that resolution would give them a actual wage cut from where they were told they were going to be.
But these are transfers, so that means they were hired already and they were transferred. So that's not saying these aren't already hired. There, there must have been a resolution for all these people to be on this transfer for twenty-eight and twenty-nine. That's what makes this confusing is I don't know why there are two different resolutions with, with several different sponsors on each one.
I think the one with the four names, um, Jill had reached out to me and asked me if she had the money in her budget. Can she give some of her employees, um, an increase? I said, if you have the money in your budget and if everybody else is willing to do it, no problem. So I think that's why number twenty-eight is the way it is. And I think twenty-nine, if I'm, I could be mistaken, I think twenty-nine is the same employees, but without the rate, without the increase.
Well, not all of them and, and, and supervisor, or it says Supervisor Benchkowski and Councilmember Juzinski were the co-chairs. And we had told her to wait on these. So she went and, and behind our back and called you then, Chris. This is where we have the problem of the co-chairs that the department heads at times are not working with the co-chairs. And, and see, you didn't know what we knew. And, and some of these salaries are the same on this resolution. When you look at it, pretty much the whole first page is the same. And these are transfers, so they have to be at some point already appointed and, and some of the salaries are just changing down the road.
Right, hence for, for resolution fifteen.
So, no, actually, resolution fifteen proves exactly the problem with the system right now is the fact that Jill had asked both her chair and co-chair to increase her employees. The decision was no by those two, the chair and co-chair, therefore she had to ask the rest of the board. It, it didn't even get filtered to the rest of the board.
Jill asked me.
Jill had talked to you and also emailed all of us and she has called us, all right, every single one of us on this. That's why there's two resolutions in case the one.
Well, then she gave, she's not here today.
And she's on vacation as per her email that she was already gonna be gone on this and this was all emailed a while back there. It's all in her email there. So we could have followed up with her before she left for vacation and now both resolutions are there. In case the one doesn't pass, something is passed to where employees still have pays and are hired.
Well, as the co-chair and the town supervisor and chief financial officer, I told her not to put this resolution in because we had to discuss this as a board because it will affect our budget next year. The more that we can put into the carryover to next year's budget will help offset the expense on the residents. We just had residents complaining about their assessments going up. So this is why we have to be careful with our spending this year. So it carries over to next year.
I don't disagree with that, but that can of worms was already open when we cherry picked one department and said, hey, we'll give increases to those temp and, and, you know, seasonal employees and then we'll give them to that one, but not that one. That can of worms is already open, so we have to address it. Every department's gonna come at us now asking for increases, as they should.
Well, we only did a few in sanitation, so.
Parks facilities, sanitation, we, we've done a couple.
This is one department and there's a lot here. A lot more than eight to ten employees in sanitation. And the same thing for parks and facility, parks, right? They're, they're only what, ten at the most? That's what I mean.
So it's based off of who has lower seasonal employees? They're allowed to give increases and not those that have more?
No, I explained that it, they had a hard time because of the position and the job that I was doing.
And so is hiring in general in any department. I don't care if it's lifeguards or if it's senior services or if it's Tim Hortons. Everywhere is having a struggle hiring, therefore you have to find a way to get employees in. City of Buffalo is not opening a single outdoor pool, but they just put in a resolution today to increase the pay of lifeguards for twenty dollars an hour to try to recruit more lifeguards.
We get all this.
We're competing with all that.
What did that yield? They still got zero applicants. So you can't just spend the taxpayers' money at will to try to entice people to work for positions that we can't fill anyways.
That I do believe was announced today, wasn't it, Brian?
Yeah, no pools and then they just put in today for an increase for lifeguards to try to recruit.
But our situation was different because we had everybody hired already. So what, they didn't even start and you're giving them a raise. I mean, that, that's just kind of beyond me.
It goes back to the increase of seasonal employees without discussing it with the board as a whole at last meeting. I'm not opposed for increasing the seasonal employees. We need them and it's nothing against the department heads that got that increase for their employees. But it opened up a can of worms to where it goes, those seasonal employees that were hired on Tuesday because the resolution passed, or on Wednesday because the resolution passed on Tuesday, were getting paid more than those that were hired on Monday before that resolution. Therefore, it has a domino effect. Same as those that have been with the town for, let's say, fifteen years as a part-time employee, now making less than a seasonal employee just hired on Wednesday after that resolution. We didn't sit down as a board and discuss that. That decision was made by a couple of board members and we didn't get to work through all the, the muddy waters right there to say the what-ifs or this could happen or this is the domino effects it's gonna have. And this right here before us is one of the many domino effects that we're gonna have moving forward.
We did have time to discuss that at the last work session.
No.
This is exactly what we've said, folks. This is why resolution fifteen is, is an imperative resolution because Mr. Polarski just told you that they can't figure this out.
Well, either way, um, I, I think that these next few resolutions need to be pulled, especially this transfer one, yes.
The, if you look at the, the two transfer resolutions, the big difference is the section of lifeguard and the various salaries there, specifically lifeguard. The other salaries by and large are exactly the same on both resolutions. This addresses the lifeguards. We're gonna need the lifeguards if we wanna have any pool open. We're talking about turning two of our three into splash pads and if we wanna have the third, we're gonna have to compete against the city of Buffalo that's now gonna be paying twenty bucks an hour. Private clubs that are paying much more and even other municipalities who are going to get beyond this. But regardless of whether we pay fourteen, fifty or fifteen or sixteen dollars, we're, we're gonna have to deal within these four resolutions to do some hiring for lifeguards. And I think we need to get serious about retention. It costs money for the lifeguards to do this course and yes, we reimburse them. But for the kind of job they're being expected to do and what it took to get to where we did, I think we should offer this wage now for the rest of this year. And then moving forward, we need to talk about what we do with the rest of the part-time scale because there, it isn't a one-size-fits-all. We gotta look position for position. But there's not as much difference between these two resolutions as it seems, and at least on the transfers. It's just, I think we should pass one of these and.
Well, let me, I agree with you on the lifeguards, but there's other people on this, this list. Some of them aren't even working through the summer. They're not starting till September with the We Three program that they're getting increases. So it, it's, I don't know how she put this together, but we really have to examine this and it's not like we have everybody on the same wage scale. You're adding some of these positions are two to three dollars extra and nobody has even quit, so, or even started.
So you're okay with increasing the town's budget spending? You're okay with that, increasing it that what hence could increase people's tax burden? You're okay with that?
We all agreed to seventeen dollars an hour for a handful of employees that opened the can of worms like Councilman Polarski said.
Just a yes or no answer?
I just answered you. I mean, it's.
So you're saying yes, you're okay with spending more of the taxpayers' money on positions that we cannot fill?
The supervisor spoke to, you know, got to the need of retention essentially. And I think we all have a little bit of a disagreement over how to retain. And we all vote to spend taxpayers' money here. It, the question comes to, do we want these lifeguards to come back to us next year or do we wanna have to train a whole new set of lifeguards at the beginning of the summer and scramble around to try to get a pool, even one pool, open?
How can you set the narrative, Brian? We can't predict the future. We're talking today and now. You're okay with spending more of the taxpayers' money on, on jobs that we can't even fill? You're okay with that? Yes or no?
I would like the pool open.
But we have these lifeguards and we also paid for their training.
Yes.
And they.
I would like to retain them.
This year, but next year, a lot of them don't come back because they're students and if they get a full-time job. So all I'm saying is I think at this point we have to, the pools are open. They're still getting their, their salary. Nobody really, I just don't understand. It makes no sense to me how you can give somebody a salary increase if they didn't even start yet and you offered them the salary fifteen dollars an hour. They took the job. We, we passed the resolution and before that now, you're gonna give them a, a pay increase, which doesn't make sense to me.
I mean, there's five names on the resolution. You guys can talk to other people if you'd like, but we've adjusted salaries mid-year consensus-wise. Each, each of the six of us agreed to mid-year salary increases. This is nothing different. It's the same thing.
Well, these, these salaries were all approved at the beginning of the year for part-times. These, some of these part-time that are on this transfer list, except for the lifeguards.
As they were for sanitation in parks and facilities.
So we're just dispending on, you know, we, people are in fear that the assessments are gonna cost them more money. Cost of gas is going up. The cost of living's going up. I get it. People need more money to survive. But we also have to take in consideration the taxpayers who pay us. We work for the people and that's where I think you misinterpret what we're really here for.
Back to the personal insults. Okay. Would you like the pool to be open?
I don't think this is gonna affect the pool being open. It, it, when does the pool, when is.
Yes or no?
It's open now.
Sir, yes or no?
It has nothing to do with the pay increase.
But see, this is, I can understand why you can't answer yes or no to a question, but it's complicated, right?
Of course I want the pool open, but Brian, I'm not voting for a pay increase for a position we can't fill. So what do we do? We've already offered these people a pay scale and now we're going back and saying, hey, you know what? Let's give you more money. You know, these people aren't gonna be lifetime, they're not gonna make a living, a living wage as a lifeguard. It's, it's a seasonal, uh, job they do in the summer to get them to go to college or whatever else, you know, whatever, you know, the way life takes them. At the end of the day, we have to be, you know, conscious of the taxpayers' money. Are we spending it to the best ways? Can you honestly say, as you're reigning on this board, you have made decisions that were conducive to saving taxpayers' dollars or money or anything to that expense?
Supervisor, can you take order of the meeting here? This is happening repeatedly.
Councilmember, you have criticized me about that several times, okay? I need to let Councilmember Juzinski finish what he said. I let you speak. Are you done, Councilmember Juzinski? Okay, all right. So, uh, so we have these two resolutions. I think that they, they should all be pulled, but anyway. Thirty is some youth and rec hiring. And there's two resolutions for that, too, which I don't understand why she put that in there, except possibly there's some more lifeguards on here. But if the ones we have are at fourteen, fifty, they should all be at that, but I'm just saying. So there's thirty and thirty-one are pretty much the same, just different movers and the lifeguards, I believe, are at different salaries. Then we have thirty-two, which is another youth and rec hiring of a non-resident lifeguard and she has two resolutions in here. One for sixteen an hour and one at fourteen, fifty an hour, which makes no sense.
I go back to she put both of those through because if one is shot down, something passes to where she's got lifeguards. One being at the lower rate that is recommended by Councilmember Juzinski and I'm assuming yourself, supervisor. And the other one recommended at the higher rate recommended by the other movers on that.
Yeah, but that wasn't her call to me because we didn't give her an okay to leave our names. I told her no.
So why do two councilmembers, two board members approve what gets put on this agenda and filter the resolutions that come before this board? That is my problem with number fifteen.
It's no different from Brian asking himself to be removed off of a, a resolution. It's the same thing. He asked himself to be removed off a resolution.
So I told the department head, we told the department head no. So yes, she went to you and asked you, that's fine. But why did she leave these two, these other resolutions on that I told her, Councilmember Juzinski and I told her no? That's confusing. Why do we have all these resolutions here now? That was the department head that chose to do that and that's not, that's just not right.
Correct. That's what the, we're supposed to do now is work that out. That's when we're supposed to make our decisions now, not say, okay, the rest of the board already decided.
Yeah, she said, has left both in, just to protect herself.
So as a sponsor of the resolutions for the higher rate of pays, I am choosing to leave my resolutions on and, and if the other sponsors agree with that. And if you and Councilmember Juzinski choose to take your resolutions off, then so be it and take it up with Jill.
But this is the problem we have that, you know.
I'd move to table them until we can have a discussion and further look into this.
Well, we can do that at the regular meeting then, when it comes to time for that. But right, this is where we are with this. We have to get through these resolution items and then we have some triaval authorizations. If anybody has any questions on, uh, those for the police department, building and plumbing, and then we have, um, waiver items. Resolution one is for the New York State DEC annual report, the appointment of a working crew chief, triaval authorization for the office of the town assessor. Any questions on those? Okay, with that being said, we'll have to close the work session. And, um, do, we should probably take five minutes to start the regular meeting. I don't know. Or do you wanna just go right into it?
I'd like five minutes, please.
Okay. So the work session is adjourned.